We are now going to take up our time certain item, which is item seventeen and eighteen, at least in my printed agenda, which is Planning Board File twenty-two zero five three three, and Planning Board File twenty-two zero five three eight, oh, I'm sorry, and Planning Board File twenty-two zero five three seven. So items sixteen and seventeen in the printed agenda, North Beach Oceanside FAR overlay. This will be the comp plan discussion as well as the land development regulation discussion.
So this is on page one-hundred-and-fifty-three on your packets. These are two companion items. The first is a comprehensive plan amendment, and the second is a land development regulation amendment. So what this does is it establishes the North Beach Oceanside FAR overlay. The overlay is generally located on the east side of Collins Avenue between Sixty-Sixth Street and Sixty-Eighth Street, and it encompasses approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-nine square feet, or five-point-three-five acres. For reference, the existing FAR in that area, it's in the RM three district, the existing FAR is three-point-oh, with an additional point-one-five FAR up to a maximum of twenty-thousand square feet for hotel amenities. So what the proposed overlay would do is for unified development sites that are one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet or greater, so if you were not, if it was not a unified development site of that size, they would not be able to fulfill themselves of these benefits, it would allow for a height of three-hundred-and-seventy-five feet, and then it would allow for an FAR of four-point-five, provided that the development includes a new hotel with at least one-hundred-and-fifty rooms. It reduces the residential density from one-hundred-and-fifty units an acre to seventy-five units an acre, and it requires that a development agreement be provided and approved by the city as part of the process. The ordinance provides that hotel units within the building containing residential units not count towards residential density. That is already a provision of the comprehensive plan, so that's not a real change. So that's what the ordinance does. To date, no information has been provided to staff regarding the proposed vision for the overlay. It does have to be approved by the Historic Preservation Board, and they may look, likely look at the Deauville Hotel that is set to be demolished on the site as part of the inspiration for the future project. As part of the ordinance, staff recommends that the Planning Board transmit the proposal with a favorable recommendation. However, because we have not yet seen plans, staff recommends that the Planning Board recommend that the LDR ordinance be modified to include setback and open space requirements specific to the future development for the project, and these could be developed prior to first reading. Additionally, staff recommends that the ordinance be modified to include a defined public benefits program. This is similar to the public benefits program that's in the North Beach Town Center, that any FAR above the base FAR of three-point-oh be subject to providing public benefits to the city. So with that, again, staff recommends that the Planning Board transmit it with a favorable recommendation. This, as it is an FAR increase, it would be subject to approval of the voters, so the City Commission could only approve it at first reading. After that, there would have to be a referendum before the City Commission could adopt the final ordinance. That's, there, I believe there is, there are people presenting, there are applicants presenting.
And then, before you start, Neeson, let's do this, let's have this presentation, and then let's open it up to the public, and we'll take the online first, we'll close that out, and then we'll take in the chamber, and then close that out. Okay?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Would you, they put my presentation forward, please, and I'll start my remarks. There we go. Good afternoon, Neeson Casden and Chris Pinellas of Acreman LLP, representing Steve Ross and the related companies. With me here today as well is Senior Vice President Jordan Bargis and Partner and Executive Vice President Roberto Rocha. You will be getting a brief presentation about the related companies, Frank Geary, the architect who has been retained to design this project, and then with some concluding remarks from Steve Ross, who unfortunately could not be here but wants to participate in this meeting. This is a truly transformational project for North Beach. I know we have talked about transformation and game-changing projects for years, but we have a unique opportunity before us now because of a team in Steve Ross and the related companies that has unparalleled ability to execute on the transformation of this very important site, combined with Frank Geary. And so let me, if we go to the next slide. The related companies, next slide, please. The related companies star, has its roots in affordable housing and still is the owner of over fifty-thousand units, but has a sixty-billion-dollar real estate portfolio, so most famous and well-regarded projects in the world, providing economic empowerment to communities as well, and is based in environmentally and sustainable leadership. Go to the next slide, please. This is an overview of the breadth and depth of the related company's portfolio and work. We go to the next slide. Of course, they are known for their truly iconic real estate developments. Most famously recently, of course, is Hudson Yards in New York, which has been lauded globally as one of the most important real estate developments of our time, both architecturally and in terms of what it has done for the city. Next slide. Before that, Steve Ross was responsible for developing the Time Warner Center, known as now as the Deutsche Bank Center, which helped transform that part of the west side of New York. Those of you who are familiar with it would know that Columbus Circle at the time was a rather risky place to put an investment of this scale and quality, but not only was it successful, but it spurred the redevelopment of many blocks in surrounding areas, making the west side a desirable place again. Next slide. Closer to home, people know Steve Ross as well for his ownership of Miami Dolphins and Hard Rock Stadium, which he has made into one of the world's most important venues for sporting events, not only out of his own pocket with no taxpayer dollars, renovating the stadium at a cost of a half-a-billion dollars or so, but also bringing Formula One racing to town, bringing international soccer matches to town of the best teams in the world, and bringing the Miami tennis, retaining it in our community by building a facility for the Miami tennis event. In addition, through the Miami Dolphins and the stadium, he has supported tens of millions of dollars of local charities. Next slide, please. Steve's vision for revitalization, though, of communities is much closer to home than many of us may even realize. We are looking now at images of City Place and Rosemary Square in West Palm Beach. This is a development of Steve and Ken Himmel, done now, I don't know, perhaps over twenty-five years ago. For those of you who are not familiar with that part of town, it was in worse shape than any part of Miami Beach probably ever was, and he was the pioneer who did a mixed-use development with cultural facilities as well. You see the Himmel Theater there, art, public space, retail, residential, and now office, and helped transform downtown West Palm Beach. Next slide, please. And of course, the person who Steve is bringing to fulfill this vision for the redevelopment of the property on which the Deauville Hotel sits is Frank Geary. Frank and Steve go back fifteen years and have worked on many projects together. You see there, the latest project, this is the Grand Partnership, across from Disney Hall, designed by Frank Geary, developed by Steve Ross and the related companies in Los Angeles. Next slide. And of course, many of you all are familiar with Geary's signature buildings throughout the world. You see the Disney Concert Hall in the upper right-hand corner, the Guggenheim in Bilbao, which was singularly responsible for the revitalization of that tired industrial city in northern Spain, and closer to home, the New World Center, which was for the New World Symphony, which was designed by Frank Geary, and I was proud to serve as Chairman of the Board of the New World when that was designed and built. And so, next slide, please. I'd like now to talk briefly about the economic impact, and we will have more about this in the coming days, but this is in the North Beach CRA. The CRA was created by this city to promote the revitalization and key projects in North Beach, from affordable housing to projects of community benefit in the neighborhood. This project alone, which is contemplated by Steve Ross to be approximately one-hundred-and-seventy-five luxury hotel rooms and one-hundred-and-fifty luxury condominium units, will generate approximately six-point-four million dollars a year to the North Beach TIF, Tax Increment Fund in the CRA, which over the twenty-three-year life of that contribution from the project would be completed in 2028, would generate on a net present value a hundred-million dollars for projects to be used for the benefit of the North Beach neighborhood. Every wish could be fulfilled. And now what I'd like to, if we go to the next slide, is hear a few words from Steve who couldn't be here.
I'm sorry, I cannot be there today because I had a conflict as I'm in Chicago, but I sure wish I was there. I grew up in Miami Beach. I went to Miami Beach Senior High School, and I've been very active in Miami over the last years. As you all probably know, I own Miami Dolphins, and we've certainly engaged this community, have done everything we can to really benefit the community. I moved to New York following college and started the related companies, which has grown to be the largest real estate company in the world, and I shouldn't say the world, I should say in the United States. And I've, though I've never developed in Miami or Miami Beach myself, I've always had a great feeling for Miami Beach, having grown up there, and my parents, my father was the manager of the then Martinique Hotel, which is no longer there, which was a sixty-fourth in Collins, and we lived in, in North Beach on Biscayne Point, and for years, not only after graduating college, have gone home and certainly had great ties to that area, great thoughts, great memories. So when the opportunity to do something in Miami Beach, to build a resort, and seeing how really the North Beach has really languished, and knowing that the opportunities that are existent there, and just, if you just look and see what happened in Surfside with the Four Seasons Hotel, and to see how that's really spurned development and increased land values and helped the whole community of Surfside, I, when I saw and the opportunity presented of the Deauville, and we were looking to develop a luxury hotel, I thought it would be a great opportunity to do something that could really have an impact on Miami Beach, but specifically add to the economic development of North Beach. So I'm really excited to have the potential of being able to do something, and knowing the importance of architecture and understanding what people really want in a community, and how do you really grow a community, I engaged Frank Geary, who we all probably think is probably one of America's greatest architects. We've just completed a major project in Los Angeles, across from the Disney Theater, which was a mixed-use project with, featuring a Conrad Hotel. This will all open in the next month. And so the idea was really to build something that would be world-class, that could have a real impact on the entire neighborhood, and really kind of rejuvenate and give the opportunity to South, to North Beach to really grow. So the team is very important. We also, and I also particularly understand the relevance of the architecture and the historic nature of the site, having been there when they really actually built the Deauville and knew the impact of the Deauville itself. We've engaged also a, an architectural historian from the University of Miami to join us in making sure that we pay homage to what has been done and what Miami Beach is all about. So together with a team, though we don't have any renderings to show you today, we're working on them. I think you'll be able to hear from Frank himself, and that we will move this forward and make sure that we are in contact with all of you and letting you know what our plans are, and hoping we can show something that will really be a real boost to North Beach and Miami Beach. I look forward to working with all of you, and I really apologize again for not being able to be there today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I may just have one more minute to conclude.
Go for it.
So this is, of course, on a rather fast timetable, because this is an opportunity that just presented itself just a couple months ago. And of course, in order for it to be able to happen, this is, requires a citywide vote because we're asking for an increase in the floor area ratio, which must be approved and put on the ballot in July by the City Commission. And so among the features, though, of this legislation, which was sponsored by Mayor Gelber, is a requirement as well that there be a development agreement between the city and the developer specifying specifically who the developer will be, what the benefits to the community will be, and any other details that are important to the community with respect to the project and the deliverables to the city. So we, you're sitting today in your capacity in the Planning Board, really in the highest, the highest position that you have, which is helping chart a path forward for the future of this city. And this, we believe, is a unique opportunity with a team that has an unparalleled ability to deliver a project that we will be proud of for generations and generations to come. Thank you.
Let's see, that's, that's all we have for a presentation, right? Okay. Who do we have online?
The first name is Elizabeth Latone.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
First of all, I'd like to say that living three buildings down from the Deauville for the past almost twenty years has been a unique experience, and it was very sad to see how it has gone down. I'm very excited to see something come up, but I am concerned about the increase in fifty percent FAR. Not quite sure why we need, when there's already three-point-oh as of right, that allows for a significantly larger development than currently sits on the land. This is looking at over a million square feet. We have seen not one single massing study, we've not seen, we've not seen anything to illustrate what the possible impacts to the sightlines, the skylines, the shade, or even on our surrounding neighborhood from the ocean and street would look like. We have seen no, we've seen nothing. I would like to ask that, I would like, as our HOA representative and my husband, to be able to meet with the city as well as the representatives for the related companies to talk about what will happen and what it will look like, what the potential impacts are. There are virtually no other parts of the city where there's such a high FAR. My fear is that it will just be a cascading effect all the way down, that if you grant it to one, then you've granted it to all of them. I'm not quite sure that we can't do what needs to be done on that site and make it absolutely spectacular and wonderful, benefit the tax, tax revenue, everything, and still stay within what we have. I'm afraid that we're going to end up looking like a mini Sunny Isles. It's just, I'm really excited, but I'm concerned that it's a rushed endeavor when we need to get proposals, or need to see what we're doing, what we're even dealing with. Anyway, I'd like to say thank you again, and I look forward to hopefully meeting with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Next, we have call-in user four.
Good afternoon, Planning Board. My name is Matthew Gold Hanoff. Today is an important day for Miami Beach. What you have before you is a billionaire developer standing head and hand, looking for a handout from the people of Miami Beach. Not content with being rewarded for failing to maintain a property vital to North Beach, a property of over five-hundred hotel rooms that was an economic engine that provided hundreds of jobs, but now they, along with elected officials, are looking for an upzoning, sold as a downzoning, and the hundreds of millions of dollars in economic benefits for the developer free of charge from residents. But it gets better. While being sold as less dense by nearly all metrics, it's way more dense in height and FAR and square footage, but not in the one that matters, providing housing for residents who are facing unprecedented hardship with declining supply, rising demand, and skyrocketing rents. The theme is now live-work-play. The work is being addressed, plenty of proposed, approved, and constructed Class A office space with fourteen-foot ceilings. The play, as we all know, is already established. The live, very little housing has been constructed in the last ten-plus years for full-time residents, while substantial housing stock has been converted to transient uses. It's fitting that the first item of discussion today was affordable housing. While it was deferred, it still is important, because now here we are, looking for a way to bend over backwards to do the opposite. So instead of providing housing for people to live, we're looking for a way to provide third, fourth, and fifth homes that will be used perhaps a handful of times a year. This is wrong and should not happen. It's unfortunate that our car-centric leaders, whether elected or professional, always seem to see the world through the perspective of the windshield. What is their concern? It's traffic and congestion. But the reality is, Miami Beach residents are among the highest in the country and locally, multiple times a greater percentage of people walk, bike, and ride transit. The more people that live here, the less traffic there will be. To be clear, it's not suggested that this whole project be workforce and/or affordable housing, but a portion of the increase in FAR, right now proposed at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet, should be reserved for this purpose, and we're not talking microunits, real housing that could support families, which are vital to neighborhood stability, safety, and security. I'll close with some excerpts from Ivy Beach's adopted comprehensive plan. Here's the intro to the housing section. The housing element of the comprehensive plan serves as a guide to achieve an inclusive and vibrant community. The goals, objectives, and policies in the housing element work to provide equitable housing opportunities, excuse me, housing options to support the city's socially economically diverse population. That part's key. And here are some of the principles in the comprehensive plan. The city should encourage redevelopment that provides workforce and affordable housing. They should provide vulnerable populations with affordable housing options that are proximate to transportation services and basic needs to improve economic mobility within the community. And under neighborhood stability, they state that the city should have available a minimum of six-eight-hundred housing units of workforce, affordable low- and moderate-income housing households, and special-need populations during the period through 2030. Of course, the opportunity that we have here is one way to get there. And then lastly, another housing element policy is to cooperate with affordable and workforce housing developers' efforts to leverage Miami-Dade County surtax funds and other financial incentives. It's fitting because the applicant is a related company and a leader in quote-unquote affordable housing. Their own website states that affordable housing laid the foundation of the related companies, and they continue to place a high priority on developing, acquiring, and preserving housing for this sector.
Okay.
I'm going to close with, it's time for everyone involved to put their money where their mouth is, and not just talk the talk, but walk the walk. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Daniel Vatia.
Hello, Mr. Board. Jose Leas, it's nice to see you back up there, kind of missed seeing you there, so it's nice to hear your comments. And, Mr. Chair, you're doing a great job. Wish I can be there with you guys, and wish you can be there in person. I'm going to do my best to keep it in two minutes.
You've got three, Daniel.
Say again, sir?
You have three, so.
Thank you. So the Deauville Hotel is important to North Beach, you all know that. Just to give it some data into perspective, our resort tax revenue in 2016, when the Deauville had just closed, was two-hundred-thousand. In 2019, it dropped to a hundred-and-ten. In 2021, it was thirty-thousand, so we only generated thirty-thousand dollars in resort tax dollars. As far as vacant storefronts in 2010, we had forty-two, and the resort district represented nine of those, which is twenty-one percent. In 2019, after the hotel closed, we had thirty-two vacant storefronts, eight of them in the resort district, that represents twenty-five percent. And in 2020, we had sixty-nine vacant storefronts, thirty-eight of them in the resort district, representing fifty-five percent of the total vacant storefronts. And that's directly related to the closure of the Deauville. So the Deauville, no matter what we do with the CRA, no matter all the great things we've been doing in the other commercial districts, will continue to bring down the economic vitality of North Beach if it doesn't come back online. You can check with the police on the number of calls to service and increased crime rates in that direct area. As far as the LDR amendment, I agree, four-point-five is a high FAR. It makes me a little concerned. Nonetheless, the Caroline Hotel next door is a four-point-oh FAR. I certainly support a point-five bonus towards added amenities to the hotels such as convention space that can hold conventions. This was a big economic impact. If we're really relying on this site being something that's going to contribute to economic vitality of North Beach in the CRA, then we certainly need to consider forcing them or giving them a bonus for bringing in that type of tourism. I think they're well below the density that the site can hold. It can hold seven-hundred-and-fifty hotel units. I understand they're only requesting a hundred-and-fifty hotel units, so I don't think that the density is going to be a concern. It's just a question of how you manage the massing of such a high FAR, and this ordinance is absent of that, unlike the ordinance that has been passed for Ocean Terrace and Town Center, which codified how that massing would be distributed in order to avoid an overwhelming nature on the pedestrian experience, and this long broken, this long consolidated vacant lots, or lots on Collins. I think the ordinance needs to be comprehensive. If we expect a voter referendum to approve it, our voters are extremely knowledgeable, very well-educated, and certainly are not going to just vote for a blanket FAR increase without the protections we've learned are necessary to get voter approval. To put it in perspective, this project's going to encompass six-hundred-thousand square feet at a current cost today, which is low of five-hundred dollars square foot. This is a three-hundred-million-dollar project. It is big. It is important, and the current owners are not the ones that are going to do it. I certainly feel there are very few out there that can manage a project this size and deliver it in short order. I think it's worth warranting, and all I ask from you is to work on a comprehensive ordinance that voters can feel confident in voting for. Thank you for hearing my comments today.
Thank you, Daniel.
Tim Reed.
Can you hear me?
Yes, good afternoon.
Hello. Yes, good afternoon. My name's Tim Reed. I'm an engineer, I work in historic preservation at Times, and I'm a historian. I cannot speak to the density or the massing issues, and, but I do like that this is going to go through the Historic Preservation Board in order to meet their requirements for this, but what I can speak to is the love for this site around the world. Now, I want to put that in the context of how the building is going to be built, not just that it's historic. I think to bring, first of all, I'd like to thank Steve Ross for appearing and making such a great presentation with his assistance there, and I think one of the really important things, and I'm glad he brought in an architectural historian, so that this can remain true to the, to the culture of the Miami modern architecture, in as much as it advances that, and I believe that the historic heart of the, of the hotel should be saved. The ballroom and the stage is one of the most important locations in the world. It is the most important location, other than the Ed Sullivan's Theater, perhaps, in New York, of Beatle history, perhaps in the world, considering that the cavern in Liverpool is not an original. So that has to be addressed, hopefully not only in that it incorporates the stage, whatever happens, but in the architecture of Frank Geary. Bringing Frank Geary in to do this is a tremendous idea. It's a golden opportunity, I think, for Miami Beach. In fact, because it's Frank Geary, it could be a titanium opportunity. Now, but I would say that the vision is really important, because Mr. Geary is known for doing very, very rough and criminal sketches. very, very rough and criminal sketches. He does sketches, and he has ideas. Now, God bless him, he's 94 years old. It's important to lock down this design and get it approved as to what it's going to be. This site is so important. It's the only place Kennedy and the Beatles both appeared. It's Motown held a tribute to Martin Luther King there with the Supremes headlining on the first anniversary of his death. It's a landmark for Jewish entertainment. It's a landmark for Black entertainment, Black Americans, all the Immortals played there of its era. This in some way should be incorporated in the design. And again, I'm not advocating it's to scale. I think it's very important that the scale be proper. I cannot say from what I've heard or seen whether that's going to be the case. I'll leave that to the design board, of course. But I do want to emphasize that this is a tremendous opportunity. It's very important, as the last couple of people made known, to get this out of the hands of the current owners. They have been a disaster, and if it's not taken from their hands, they're going to ruin this opportunity. So please, Mr. Ross, and please everybody involved, thank you for everyone who's helping, please, Mr. Ross, try to make sure that this tributes the history of this building as an entertainment capital of the world, something that incorporates the history of the Beatles because, quite frankly, that's its most significant history, and it has quite a bit of significant history. Now, and this should all be done in a way that it's made clear that this is not a precedent for other people to destroy landmarks on Miami Beach. Because if the present owners are rewarded in a way that this is not made clear it's a precedent, this will be a template for destroying landmarks all up and down Miami Beach.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Tim, I'm going to have to cut you off. Thank you very much.
Wayne Roberts?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Let me say that I have no historical perspective on property. I'm not an architect. I'm not a designer. I'm a businessperson. And what I find wrong with the process is that the planning board consistently approves extensions of FAR across Miami Beach to connected developers. And Mr. Ross is a very fine man, and I'm not disparaging any developer. I'm just saying they're businesspeople. And we need to manage expectations by these developers as to what they can do. And this board does not do that effectively. 375 feet is excessive, and Mr. Ross has built very dense buildings, whether it's Time Warner or Hudson Yards. I visited both. I know them. And quite frankly, they're not doing that well. Retail is not doing well in those buildings, and the love for those buildings are not in New York. And the West Side was doing extremely well before them. And the subways, the cars that the Hudson Yards is built on was a mess, and I appreciate that something had to be done there. I don't know if that sort of development was a good thing, but it's high density. And Miami Beach shouldn't be Manhattan. It's a special place, and you guys have to set, you know, red lines. That's what the planning board does, and it's not doing it effectively. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Steven Ross?
Steven, can you unmute yourself, please?
What are those instructions for the unmuting star something?
I think it's star six to unmute, right?
Star six to unmute? It doesn't seem like he's calling from a phone.
Oh, so he's on a web?
Yeah.
I apologize, everyone. I have to leave. I wanted to vote on this item. I was inclined to vote no, and I have to leave. I'm sorry. So continue without me.
Thank you, Gail, for the time today. Enjoy yourself. Go ahead, Mr. Ross.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good afternoon.
I mean, good afternoon. I'm sorry, I just arrived, and I'm in my car in transit to the office, but, and I didn't hear a lot of the conversation. I can always say, I've heard, what I have heard is that, one, you know, people don't know what we're building there. I think what, first of all, I know the area extremely well. I probably, I grew up, I watched it get built. My family owned the hotel down the block, and so, and I lived in the area and came back to visit my parents, you know, up until the last 10 years or so. But what I do know is that we will build something that will have tremendous economic development opportunities, pay recognition to what the Deauville is, or what it was, I should say, and that, working with Frank Gehry, I'm sorry, you know, we got involved late in terms of being in the position to have plans and to show your renderings. We will certainly do that. We look to be very active in the community. The community means an awful lot to me, and I don't, there's probably no one who probably knows it better than I do that's really involved with it. And I think that Miami Beach and had been, was supposed to be one of the developers originally of South Beach, saw how Miami Beach has grown through the years. And, you know, we work very well with the community, but we're really new into the game, just getting into it, working with Frank. We want to create something that'll really be something that will really bring a lot of economic development. I mean, you talk about a lot of things in terms of what the community needs, but it needs to have economic development, jobs. In Miami, hotel will bring those jobs, will bring people, will bring taxes. And I think more important, the type of development will have a great deal of enhancing the neighborhood and bringing the growth that is really needed to North Beach to, so it can get all the advantages that the rest of Miami Beach has had, as it's, I don't think it's really developed at the same pace as the rest of Miami Beach. And we're committed to it. I think in any community you go to, I think we built, we understand the cities, we've worked with them, and we've built the finest developments in each of those cities. We're known for being the best in class, and we'll give nothing less than that to this development.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? Or you want to do that later?
You want to ask, because of Mr. Ross?
Yeah, for Mr. Ross, I guess.
Yeah, go ahead.
One of the main questions I have is what sort of, obviously, you don't have renderings, and you haven't gotten that far into the process, but what are the important historical elements of the Deauville that you intend to, not necessarily preserve, but pay homage to? What are, at least early conversations you've had, what is it that you're looking at to preserve or pay homage to?
Well, I mean, you know, the first thing, you know, having been, gone by that building and spent a lot of time in it, you know, the first thing when you think about the arches as you enter the building, you know, I think that was the most unique feature of the hotel. The hotel itself, in terms of Miami Beach, it, you know, it wasn't Art Deco. It was a different type of style that's, you know, you can't, that's, I don't think you'd want to duplicate, but I think that, you know, I think paying homage to the Beatles and what was brought there, what was done there is, was mentioned in earlier speeches. And I really would let the architects really, you know, work on that. We have a historic, an architect who teaches the immersive Miami that will work with Frank Gehry, and, you know, I'll leave that up to them to see how it can pay homage, you know, to the Deauville. But to me, having, you know, been there, it was really those arches at the entrance to the hotel that was probably the most unique. I mean, yes, it had, you know, it had a great music room for entertainment and all that. It changed Miami Beach in a lot of different ways, the Deauville Hotel, when it was built. And, but, you know, I'll let them get into the historic or the landmark preservation things that you might like to see or pay homage to.
Next speaker, Paula King.
Good afternoon. How are you? My name is Paula King. I'm the vice president of, actually, the president of Biscayne Beach Neighborhood Association. I'm on the board of directors of NOSNAB, which is neighborhood organizations to save North Beach. North Beach has been kind of through a lot and had a lot of things pushed on them. For example, we voted for, as a community, we voted for 12-story in Town Center. Developers have been able to push that up to 23, I think, and we're still counting. At Chaplain Towers, we were presented with a hotel. We approved it with additional FAR. We ended up with a condominium. We've lost our log cabin, which is the beloved building in North Beach. I could go on and on and on, but what I'm trying to demonstrate is the lack of trust of development in North Beach. So I personally have a very hard time approving something that I haven't seen here. I, again, I'm going to echo Wayne. I'm not really thrilled with Hudson Yards. I don't love it, you know? It's not a wonderful place to be, if you ask me. We really need someone who's going to work to bring our neighborhood to the next level without gain. And, you know, I feel asking for approval of something like this without any plan is totally crazy, and that we shouldn't, we shouldn't do it. You know, we have problems with poop in our canals here. What are they going to do to improve infrastructure here? Are you going to build all of these new units without infrastructure? I, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Next speaker's Rudy Perez.
It's actually Betsy Perez. Sorry. How are you? My husband and I, Rudy, live in the neighborhood. We're in the Altus Del Mar area. I, I'm calling in support of this and moving this forward. This is a game changer for our area. We've been waiting for 20-something years for things to happen here, and I wanted to say, I'm so tired of seating that light of a building there every time you walk by it. It's scary. It looks like it's going to fall down on people walking on the boardwalk. So I want to thank Mr. Ross, and I want to thank him for going back to his roots and coming to help our community and revitalize it and bring it back to its grandeur one day. I want to thank Mr. Gehry for jumping on board. I can't wait to see what plans they're going to draw up. In regard to all of the other comments that people have been saying that they're, they don't want anything to happen without seeing the plans, well, it's my understanding that, you know, we're, they're late in the game, but once it goes to vote, I believe we will be able to see plans, and I believe that the voters can vote on it at that moment. I think stopping it now at this process is the wrong thing. I think you should move it forward and get it to a vote and let the community see what's going to be built and decide then. I think that's the job of the planning committee and the mayor and commission to realize the challenges that are happening in our community and find wonderful investors such as Mr. Ross and Mr. Gehry to change things and bring it around. I'm afraid that if this doesn't happen, I'm not sure who could take on this project. So I urge you all on this planning board today to please help move this forward, help bring it to a vote, help our community decide, help our community to see the plans, and then we'll decide. I currently serve on the CRA committee, and I can say that we're very excited about the Tiff windfall that could come with these, with this new development. The new 72nd Street Community Center needs hotel and condos for its competitive events. This is, this is perfect timing. It's like a godsend, and I hope and pray that you all just move it forward and let us all decide. Thank you very much for your, for your time.
Next, we have Sandra Skidmore.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, I'll be very brief since I'm at work. I'm trying to find a place where I can talk. I love Frank. Someone like Steven Ross is interested in revitalizing North Beach, however, very concerned about the increase in FAR. We're talking about, you know, doubling the height increase. I'm not interested in having another Little Sunny Isles or Little Dubai. I mean, part of the charm of both South Beach and North Beach is the low-rise buildings, pedestrian-friendly, accessible neighborhood feeling. I'm opposed on the basis of the FAR. I would like to see, I don't understand why that increase is needed. And I'm a little bit concerned about, you know, developers, the current owners and potential developer being rewarded for demolition by neglect. I'd like to see a master plan project proposal, details on public benefits, since that's not been provided, and I feel like this is being rushed through without those. I'd like to see a step back a little bit. Other Melvin Grossman buildings have successfully been adapted to today's market, like Edition Hotel and One Hotel, and I'd like to see the Deauville Hotel replicated or restored and then have an addition made. So, thank you very much for your time.
Next, we have Manning Salazar.
Good afternoon, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak to this issue. I'm resident of North Beach. I'm also on the board of the neighborhood organization to save North Beach, and I'm also a member of the CRA Advisory Committee. All of us in North Beach have experienced what it means to have the Deauville closed and the impact on our economy, and, you know, and so we're all very anxious to have something done there. But, you know, we're also want to make sure that what gets done there is, is the right project. And I just think that approving something without seeing the plans and knowing what's going to go up and having a leap of faith is not the right way to approach this. We need to be very careful about what we do in that location and the impact on the area and the impact on the scale. You know, raising the FAR to a level that's being discussed now will give them well over a million square feet. You know, that's going to have a big impact on the area. There has been no studies on the impact on the skyline, on shade, and on our traffic congestion. There's, we have two corridors going, one corridor going north and one corridor going south in this area, and there's already a lot of traffic. And also on our infrastructure and our sewage line. As another caller mentioned, around Parkview Island, in the canal around Parkview Island, for years, there's, we can't, go into the water, and the kayak launch has been closed because of bacteria in the water. And many people feel that's because of breaks in the sewage lines, and that has not been addressed, and a project of this size will have a big impact on our infrastructure. You know, so I don't, I think that, yes, this may be a good project or what's going to be presented, and I appreciate Mr. Ross of taking an interest, and, you know, he has roots in the area, but I think it's incumbent on the board to be cautious and to, you know, see what's going to be done before it's presented to the voters and before it's approved. And, you know, I am, as I mentioned, I'm also on the CRA Advisory Committee, and the position that we took at our meeting, I believe a week ago or two weeks ago, was that we needed more information, and that's exactly what we need, more information, before we make a decision on such an important project in the area. We can't allow the impact that the previous owners have had on the, on the area and their demolition by neglect to cause us to rush. And there is, of course, the issue of rewarding that behavior, which makes a mockery of our laws for and their demolition by neglect to cause us to rush. And there is, of course, the issue of rewarding that behavior, which makes a mockery of our laws for preservation. So, you know, I would urge the board to, you know, ask to take, to be slow, to not approve this at this time, and to get more details. Thank you very much.
Dan Gelber.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Good afternoon, Mayor Gelber.
Good afternoon and thank you all for doing this important work. And I don't know that I've ever called into a planning board meeting in the near five years I've been mayor, but I felt that this project was important enough, just to say something briefly to everybody. You know, nobody likes what happened on this site, nobody is happy with the current owners. But if you drive or walk by this area, you know that this is not, for five years, it's been, it's been worse than a hole in the ground. What it has done to this region, what it has done to North Beach, what it's done to our city, it's hard to put words and describe it, frankly. And I didn't know what we were going to do, I was hoping somebody would come and wrest control of it from the current owners. I was hoping somebody would step up and say, it can be much more. And when somebody with the ability to actually take the property and an architect who, literally, when you Google most famous living architect, that's who you get. When those options appeared, it became something that was just too, too much to not say, we gotta do this. So I don't know what it's gonna look like, I think we're gonna all see that, but the voters will get a chance to to get the information before November, the commission will get a chance. But one thing, somebody talked about affordable and workforce housing, let me just say this. We created a CRA in this area just in the last year. That CRA is essentially a mousetrap that collects the incremental increases in tax, which I think Neeson explained earlier. That's gonna create an amazing amount of revenue for this region. I think what you're looking at in this project is the single greatest catalyst North Beach could ever have. And I have lived in this city for 61 years, I've watched North Beach be neglected, I've watched it fall into disrepair. I've watched it over the last five years in this particular area fall into even greater disrepair. So I appreciate the work you're doing, I think you should give us guidance. But I also think we all need to recognize that if we, if we find a lot of really, you know, imaginary reasons to not do this, then it's very possible in five or 10 or 15 years, this will be just like the Roosevelt Theater is on 41st Street, or other projects that just, nothing ever happened, they just became nothing. And I don't think this area can afford that or deserves it. So while I don't feel great about the current owners, I'm not gonna punish the current residents because I wanna impart some punishment to them. I want, and I think we all want, North Beach to reach its greatest potential. And this is something that is available to us now, that frankly, I could not have imagined we'd have available to us today just a few months ago, so I think, I think we need to do good work, and we need to get this done and present it to the voters in November in the best version it can be, so that they can approve it. Thank you for your time.
Ronnie Eisenberg.
Hi there, this is Ron Eisenberg, and thank you everyone for giving me the time, and certainly appreciate everybody else's energy and time to help North Beach. I live on Biscayne Point, currently the president of the Homeowners Association, and also sit on the North Beach CRA Advisory Committee, and a few other things going on up here in North Beach where I'm raising two young daughters, and take advantage of everything North Beach has to offer, along with being a 52-year resident of Miami Beach. All I can say is that on a personal note, and many people I speak to within our community, obviously what's happened at the property where I grew up and was at that hotel many, many times while growing up, it's unfortunate what's taken place, but the opportunity at hand with the amount of value it had, one, to the CRA and the taxes coming back to the community, but also to catapult and to coincide and coexist with all the other great projects that are happening here in North Beach. Growing pains are not easy, but I just, I, my whole family and I just wholeheartedly hope that you will push this through to get onto the ballot and let the voters decide. And certainly by that time, before it goes to vote, I would think that the developer would have renderings and ideas of what's gonna be presented to get the voters buy-in and to get it approved. So all we can say is we hope that you move this forward today. I think there's more people that are in favor of it. I don't think a lot of people know enough about it to know what a great project this would be and how much it would add to North Beach. So all I can say is thank you again for everyone's time, and we certainly hope that it gets passed today.
Tom Richardson.
Hello, thanks for your time today. I live at 650 Collins Avenue. I can see the Deauville out of my windows, I'm the president of our homeowners, our condo association. We've been staring at this mess for over five years, and I'm just calling in to be supportive of what the mayor said and the others who are supportive of at least giving the opportunity to move forward sooner than later. I know it seems like a fast timeline to say that we're gonna get on the ballot in November, but you have to look at the bigger picture, which has been a very slow timeline for any progress here, and as the property has deteriorated. I know that the community will benefit, in the short time we get this on the ballot, and it's a project that the community supports and votes for, it's better to do it sooner rather than later. And the community will benefit in the long term by getting funds in for this CRA sooner rather than later. And I really disagree with the people that say we need to slow down. We've suffered from that syndrome since the 10 years I've lived here, which is always to say, well, let's just slow down and think about it. That's caused delays all over the place, delays with implementing everything in the town center, delays with North Shore Park, delays with Ocean Terrace, and here we're on 10 years. I really hope what the mayor says doesn't happen, what he fears, which is that we're gonna turn this down in the hopes that something else is gonna come around better. We're gonna delay it, and then the next thing you know, another 10 years goes by. So please let it go forward, let the people have their vote, let's see what they come up with the plan, if it's no good, then the people will vote against it. If it's good enough for the community, let the voters have their say, thank you very much.
We have no other hands raised online.
All right, seeing none online, we're gonna close the opportunity for the public to speak online. Do we have members in the chamber, persons present in the chamber that wanna speak on the item? And just, as you come, just announce your name.
Yes, my name's Joseph Magazine, 650 West Avenue. First and foremost, thank you all for your time and dedication, I know it's a long day, and you're all civil servants, so thank you very much for the time you dedicate to our city. I wasn't planning on speaking on this issue, I don't feel strongly one way or another. One thing I will just pose is Wayne Gretzky, the greatest hockey player of all time. They said he was so great because he didn't just look at what was in front of him, but he looked two plays ahead. And when you're thinking about what the right and wrong direction here is, I would just ask, if this is a no, what happens? Play that scenario out, because if one of the world's greatest, you know, real estate companies is turned down here, and the current owners are very deep-pocketed, the fear is that they just wait this out, and we get, as Mayor Gelber put, worse than a hole in the ground in North Beach. And this is just stagnated by five, 10, 15 years. The other thing that I would ask to consider, and perhaps this isn't in the purview of the planning board, but again, it goes, one of my, you know, biggest issues is housing in Miami Beach, and Chairman, I heard you speak to that as well. Mr. Kazdin made a mention that this is supposed to bring a net present value of $100 million in incremental financing. Perhaps with a developer like this, you can find a way to accelerate some of those payments. It wouldn't be the full amount of $100 million, because that would obviously be extremely risky for the developer, but even if it would be 25% of that, where you would say, okay, on day one of the project, we will essentially accelerate, the developer will essentially pre-fund 25% of the amount of tax incremental financing that would expect to be incurred over the life of the project. And that way, that could be put into an immediate affordable housing fund, instead of the city accruing four to five million dollars each and every year. Essentially, you can split some of that risk with the developer, get an accelerated payment, work on some of that affordable housing immediately, and, you know, perhaps kind of, there's a time and a place for affordable housing, I'm not sure if this development will be one of it, but it could, as Mayor Gelber put, go towards that usage in the CRA. But by doing that, where the developer essentially pre-funds some of that tax incremental financing, you can attack that on day one. So thank you again for all your time, and whatever decision you make, I think you'll do with the best intentions of our community, thank you.
Neeson, when you come back up, you'll clarify the $100 million, I think it was a present value overall, I don't think it was attributed to TIF, but you don't need to rise for that, but I just wanna make that clarification. Yes, sir, Mr. Larkin.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Michael Larkin. I represent the other two owners in the overlay, Mr. Chairman, so can I have about between five to six minutes, please?
Yeah, we'll give you six minutes.
So, good afternoon, Michael Larkin, 200 South East King Boulevard, here representing the other two owners in this overlay. The owners to the north, their principals are Diego Colmanero and Charlie Porchetto. The owners to the south are Ira and Joel Sussman and their family, they own the Sherry-Frontenac Hotel. I'm joined here today by my co-counsel, Paul Savage, and my colleague, Robert Alexander, who just passed out to you all, are ordinance that is revised. I do believe this is a beneficial piece of legislation for North Beach. The potential redevelopment of this section of Collins Avenue would catapult North Beach from being a very good neighborhood to one of our city's very best neighborhoods. Mr. Ross is responsible for the evolution and creation of Hudson Yards on the west side of Manhattan, a former no man's land in between Chelsea and Hell's Kitchen, but now a thriving mixed-use neighborhood. I stayed at the Equinox Hotel for about a week in April, and I felt and I saw the energy that radiated out from Hudson Yards into the surrounding neighborhood. I do believe and I'm confident that the same could happen here. However, the greatest benefits of this legislation are not equally applied to all owners within this overlay, and that is simply not fair. The increase to a maximum of 4.5 FAR and the increase to 375 feet in height is reserved for those lots in excess of 150,000 square feet. The only lot within the overlay that meets this standard is the Deauville Hotel Assemblage. The lot owned by Charlie and Diego to the north does not. The Sherry-Frontenac property does not. Only the Deauville Hotel Assemblage meets this standard. In order to achieve the maximum of 4.5 FAR or the maximum height of 375 feet, our clients would be forced to bind their property to the Deauville Hotel Assemblage through a covenant and living title to meet this standard. This is simply not a fair way to go about this. Each of these properties should be able to achieve the greatest benefits under this legislation, independent of each other. As a result, we're asking you all in your recommendation to the City Commission to remove this 150,000-square-foot requirement, and I do believe this legislation should go forward today. Our requests are minor and they're reasonable, and you all could transmit this legislation today, I think it'd be in the best interest of the city if you all did so. Second, we are asking you to include the entire Sherry-Frontenac property within the overlay, not just the northernmost lot of the property. It is true that the northernmost lot would be the easiest lot to bind to the Deauville Hotel Assemblage, but that should not be the litmus test for determining where the southern boundary of this overlay is located. The Sussmans have maintained the Sherry-Frontenac for decades at a very high cost, and they have done a good job. And in fact, over the last 20 years, they've come to me once a year and asked me, Michael, do we have this idea? Michael, can we do this to improve the Sherry-Frontenac? So they are very active, beneficial landlords, or really owners, to the Sherry-Frontenac, an historic hotel. The inclusion of the Sherry-Frontenac within the overlay would give them the ability to construct a new building on the vacant lot, which would ease their financial burden of maintaining the historic Sherry-Frontenac by giving them additional revenue by which to do so. Finally, we request that the requirement here that says a new hotel must be constructed of at least 150 hotel units be modified to say new or existing hotel. The Sherry-Frontenac itself exceeds 150 hotel units. They, we're going to do more with this new tower, a mixture, perhaps, hotel suites and residential units, but if it's just new hotel units, clearly the Sherry-Frontenac would not comply. So we're asking you just to modify that slightly to say new or existing hotel consisting of a minimum of 150 units. All that is reflected in the ordinance that we passed out to you, the highlighted language is our language. Accordingly, we respectfully request that you incorporate these changes in your recommendation to the City Commission concerning this overlay. As a matter of fairness, it is essential that all three owners be treated equally and that the overlay not just favor one owner. Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else in the chamber wanting to speak on the item?
Good afternoon, Honorable Board, my name is Paul Savage, I have law offices at 2555 Ponce de Leon Boulevard in Coral Gables, Florida. I'm here also representing the two bookend owners, the Sherry-Frontenac and BTL Investments, which have the north and the southern parcels that are the bookends of this overlay district, proposed overlay district. I will just very briefly, number one, thank you, as one of the other speakers said, it's my pleasure to appear before you. I'm mostly in front of the Historic Preservation Board, but it's my pleasure to come, and I thank you for your service. Without repeating what Michael said so professionally and so eloquently, I just wanted to fine-tune a couple of the points having to do with the idea that this is couched as an overlay, as a piece of legislation. So, in other words, you're acting in a legislative capacity to decide something that is wise and supported by strong public policy for a whole area of the city, and that's why you would do something like make a North Beach over, and you go to the strikeout in other line, it says that it's the prerequisite to enjoy the height benefit of 375 feet, and also the increase in FAR, the prerequisite to enjoy in those, as your staff, when they summarize the item, said, only those properties, and as Michael explained, only those properties that are 150,000 square feet in size can participate. And I'll also, I'll just hand out a, I'll just hand out a small rendering that I have that just has the square footage of the properties, so that you can see that there's no way we could ever avail ourselves. So, what's my point? My point is that if the applicants, I'll call them the applicants, who are very fine people, incredibly successful people, you know, very good zoning council, everything, actually, the mayor called in, great. But it's not only just who it is, we're here discharging our duty as to what it is, we have to make sure what it says exactly. And this, as it's drafted, without the amendments, treating everyone fairly will run afoul of several zoning legal concepts. One is equal protection, that you all know, that everyone in the borders should be, should be treated fairly and equitably. Secondly, it's essentially, if you don't change it, it's essentially a rezoning of a single parcel, and we think that that's the wrong process and has a legal problem. So, we urge you, as Michael said, very, as owners and custodians really, last thing, last point I wanna make in the few seconds I have left, is if we are going to use the largesse of the city's legislative power to grant additional height and FAR to a property, the people sitting behind me who are respected custodians of a contributing property such as the Sherry-Frontenac, they should enjoy that, if anyone should, it should be them. With those remarks, I will conclude, and I appreciate your, appreciate your patience and for listening to me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Savage. Anyone else?
I don't think I've, am I on? I don't think I've appeared at the planning board probably in the last 20 or 30 years. I was a city commissioner, I know, yeah, just, I'm Bob Goodman.
And your affiliation.
Bob Goodman, yeah. I think I've known every mayor there, let's say at least 75% of them, since 1967, living here my whole life. I'm not an attorney. I'm in the advertising marketing business now for 60 years, and the Deauville Hotel is a client of mine. When Morris Landsberg and the Cohen family owned it, I did their advertising, we used to do a full-page ad in the New York Times every Sunday promoting the Deauville and the Eden Rock Hotel. Those are the years that Sonny Anshier and Liberace and Tom Jones and Stephen Edie Gourmet and Sinatra and Tony Bennett played there. So I know the hotel quite well, been there many, many times. I grew up with Steve Ross, went to high school with him, went to college with him, fraternity brother with him. I'm amazed at what he's done and accomplished, he's a good man, very capable. accomplished. He's a good man, very capable. The idea of bringing Frank Gehry along with him to develop this property that is ready to fall down and will fall down eventually, we have no idea what's going to replace it, is brilliant, and I laud him and appreciate what he's doing, wanting to do. What this board was created is to plan the future of the city. You are planning, members, therefore guiding the City Commission. If I was sitting up there, I would definitely want to see more. I would definitely want to know more. We all do. I do. But you should recommend that it moves forward. By the time it'll get to the voters, if the commission will approve it as well, we will all have the opportunity to see what it will look like, how big it will be, how it will feel, and the voters then will decide if this is what we want. The benefits are obvious. The previous speakers have mentioned it, and it will pay homage to its history. It belongs there, and who better than Steve Ross and Frank Gehry? What he has done with the New World Center is absolutely spectacular. It'll be that way for the next 50 years. So, with that, I just want to say, have the vision, have the trust, and have the belief on what could be there in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Daniel?
Yes, hi. Thank you. Daniel Seraldo with Miami Design Preservation League. So, we did send a letter to all the planning board. Just wanted to put that officially into the record, so I don't have to read it verbatim. It sounds like now you have a couple issues. So, obviously, the spot zoning and the question of whether this is even legal is something we just learned about, and very concerning hearing from the wonderful owners of the Sherry-Frontenac, where, by the way, my dad went as a little kid. He loved that hotel, so might have something to do with me living here. But, you know, it's totally unfair what's being proposed right now. You've got one lot that gets all the zoning, and then you've got all these side lots that don't get it. So, I really feel for them, and it looks like that may go to litigation. But I want to talk about what's really important to us, which is historic preservation. That has not been mentioned at all today by really anybody. It's not even in the zoning ordinance. I heard Paul Savage mention about maybe contributing buildings could be an incentive for additional FAR. You all are the planning board. You're supposed to take the mission of the zone, and you're supposed to promote that mission. So, just from square one, saying, okay, you could demolish a contributing building, and then you could build 50% more than you'd normally be allowed to, that's backwards. So, I make the pledge, and whether it's the people sitting in the back or Steve Ross on the phone, my email, daniel@mdpl.org, we really want to speak. We think there's a great win-win that could happen if there were preservation of the Deauville, then that might open some flexibility on our end for additional development incentives. If not, you know what's going to happen? It's going to go to the voters, and it's going to fail, because our voters only one time ever supported FAR increase. That was for a master plan that was done with a lot of consensus. So, we have a very short time to work together, but I remain available for Neeson and Steve and the team to talk about the ways that they could really revamp that site and maybe add some development incentives. We've seen the Carolin, by the way, that was 15 years it was rundown. And then they did have renovation and new development, and I really know that that's possible here, but I just don't see how you get the voters' approval by just looking at the Deauville as a vacant lot. This site has so much more importance than just being the next Hudson Yards. This is our landmark in North Beach. I was part of the effort to set up the CRA. The CRA is supposed to be funded by the FAR that the voters approved a few years ago with Town Center. So, to all of a sudden say, we're going to add on to that CRA with this mega project, I just worry. Miami Beach, we're not really about mega projects. Our resort taxes, our property taxes are at record highs with some of these big projects shut down. So, we could do better, and we will do better, and please help us move that forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Ken?
Hi, Ken Hasen-Robins. I was planning to speak on this matter, but sitting here and knowing Daniel and the effort of the Historic Preservation Community, which I've been actively part of for over 30 years, I felt it'd be remiss not to speak on this matter. My question is, why 4.5 FAR? What has been shown to you that this project could not be developed at 3.0 FAR? And the next question that came to mind as I'm listening is, why would you put this on the ballot with all the other FAR issues and highlight the increase in the FAR on this very, very large proposal, which would probably condemn all the FAR increase proposals that are being proposed as rest of your agenda? So, from a, and I know you're not political, but from a political point inasmuch as I ran the political campaign for the Save Miami Beach, I would say you'd be condemning the rest of the ballot items for loss because of how unattractive this proposed project would be. Not saying that Frank Gehry can propose a great project, but that this city and the citizens of this city have regularly voted down FAR. So, by approving this project and putting it on the ballot, you may be condemning the rest of the projects that you are proposing that may need the FAR to make them work. So, having analyzed that, I want you to take a moment to look at this project and ask, why can't this project be done under 3.0 FAR? And if the goal of saving a historic resource is recognized by this board, which it does have the duty on the goals, objectives, and policies, what do we need to do? What does this board need to do today to make certain that the historic resources on the site are preserved by working with M DPL and the Historic Preservation Community? That's the questions I have, and that's the questions I want to present to you. I think you need to study this more. I know you want to get it on the ballot, but I think this is the worst thing that you can do for the rest of the projects being proposed on that ballot. It will go down. It will go down. Thank you.
Anybody else in the chamber wanting to speak on the item?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hi, how are you? I'm Jack Finglass. I'm the former chairman of the H P B, and I have a few comments to make. Number one, this discussion has been based solely on the fact that the patient has died. The patient has not died. The patient is alive and well. The new engineering study shows that it is not going to fall into a heap next week or next month, as most people who have spoken and who have commented on this process seem to want to believe. The idea that you need 4.5 or 5.0 FAR in the city of Miami Beach is frankly, it's monstrous. It is monstrous in so many ways. The highest, I think, we have now is 3-point-something, if that. You're doubling, proposing to double the size of many new buildings. You're, in effect, destroying the historic character that Miami Beach has always have, had, and in so many ways, it's just a wrong proposal. Take the Carolin. The Carolin was in much worse condition, many, many people have told me, for years, and look how it's thriving now, because someone stepped up to the plate, did a great job in preserving it, and now it's very successful and a key anchor, one of the few key anchors in North Beach. That's really all I have to say. I think the facts speak for themselves. We need to keep the patient alive. It's very famous. Everybody around the world knows it. It's been all the newspapers. I know this nice man here from the press has written about it many times, and there's no reason to tear it down. We're making a rush, a big, big rush to judgment. I've asked the inspector general to take a peek at this, because when you have the, all the parties involved, looking at it and stamping their approval within one day that it's been brought up, something smells fishy and dead mark to me about this. I don't know what it is. I don't have any proof, but things don't move this fast. Architects don't appear out of the sky. Developers don't appear within a few days, and I think all this needs to be looked at, and we need to slow the rush to judgment, because we're going to make a big mistake if we don't. Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Jack Johnson. I'm the chair of the Board of the Miami Design Preservation League. You are about to deal with two proposals, which taken together will fundamentally change the nature of our city. The first is this proposal with regard to the Deauville. The second is the Collins Avenue Ocean Drive M X E upzoning. In both cases, the proposed changes in FAR will affect significantly the historic nature of our community. In the case of the Deauville, because of the historic nature of the Deauville Hotel itself, the fact that it can, in fact, be saved, and the fact that it doesn't use up all of the currently available FAR. In the case of the Collins Avenue Ocean Drive M X E upzoning, in both cases, we're talking about 50% upzoning in terms of allowable FAR. The Collins Avenue Ocean Drive M X E is the very heart of the Art Deco Architectural District in this city. It doesn't propose to destroy the Art Deco buildings, but it does propose to overwhelm them. And one other point that I want to make regarding the Deauville in particular, a 4.5 FAR is higher than a full FAR than the currently highest-allowed FAR in the city, which is 3.5. I don't know why we would rush, all of a sudden, to make those kinds of changes in FAR. It makes no sense to me in these two places, for that matter, in any other part of the city. So, I would ask you to slow down, take a look at those things. We were promised that we would have drawings, that we would have something to show for the new proposal by the time of this planning board meeting. That promise was made at the City Commission meeting, where this was first taken up. You don't have any such thing yet. We don't know when we will have it. If we're lucky, we'll have it by the time we all vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else in the auditorium wanting to speak on the item?
We'd like to get one, two, seven times three. We'll give back some FAR.
First of all, we'd like to thank you all. Most of you took our calls, and we had an opportunity to speak with you. We really appreciate your civil duty and the opportunity to be heard. We're with the Sherry-Frontenac Hotel. We've been there over 50 years. Dad bought the property in 1972. He always had fond memories of Miami Beach. He was here on his honeymoon, and he spent a little time during World War II here as well. He was a paratrooper overseas. We thank the mayor for his support of this initiative, of the redevelopment of the Deauville site. It's been a challenge for us. We're a neighboring property, the Sherry-Frontenac Hotel, and as you can appreciate, the Deauville's been closed for several years. It attracts all challenges for people that are trying to run a family business next door. We looked at the overlay, and we support the redevelopment at the Deauville Hotel site. The thing that challenged us, and why we're here to speak, is that the overlay does not include the Sherry-Frontenac. It doesn't even include the lot, which is shaded in as part of the overlay, because the overlay only helps properties over 150,000 square feet, or if they have less than a 3 FAR. We have a 3 FAR. So, we have gotten nothing from this proposal, and when we look at this, we think it is wrong. Here, a property is going to get all of the benefit, but one property does not make a community. The property to the north of the Deauville should receive the same benefits as the Deauville, and the property, including the Sherry-Frontenac, which should be the southern boundary of the overlay zone, should get the same benefits. We should all get the same benefits. This is not an opportunity just to reward one developer. We've been there 50 years. We've been faithful stewards of the Sherry-Frontenac. The Sherry-Frontenac is a historic hotel, which means in its simplest basic that it's a public benefit. We provide a public benefit, and we get nothing for it from the city. Now, we're not looking for awards or anything like that. It's a property that's a fine example of liner deco, but we've been left out, and we find that unconscionable, that they left us out of this overlay zone. We attribute it that they just forgot. We don't think it's malicious, but fundamentally, it is wrong not to...
We won't do that. We're going to, I need you to wrap in a minute.
And you're too...
You can't transfer, and plus you have your attorneys.
Okay, let me just finish a couple of thoughts.
Go ahead. You've got one minute.
Okay. So, we think it is wrong that we were not included. Second of all, next to us, the Deauville site, is a historic property that's being demolished. We're a historic property that's been preserved. We've protected it. We preserve it. They're getting all these benefits, and we're getting nothing. That's wrong. That's absolutely wrong. Historic properties that preserve, it's very expensive to preserve a historic property, from all kinds of elements, from the insurance costs are much higher, from the repairs and maintenance, and we've gone through the 40-year recertifications and each successive 10-year recertification, and we do to meet the standards and provide a good hotel. We'd like to do better. We'd like to get, we can't use the new FAR at the Sherry-Frontenac. We'd like to take the additional FAR that's going to the Deauville and to the property to the north and put it on our lot, so we can derive greater revenues to continue the preservation of the Sherry-Frontenac Hotel. I thank you, and I'd like to introduce my brother, Joel, my father, Elias, my sister, Perry, my wife, Marcia, my daughter, Miriam, and her husband. She was just married at the Sherry-Frontenac in April. So, I thank you for listening.
All right. Thank you. Now, Joe, I'm going to cut you off. I mean, I think, I don't want to do like a three-minute, a three-minute, a three-minute. That could go on. I apologize, but I'm going to cut you off.
And your attorney spoke on your behalf as well, so we understand.
That's well said. Thank you.
Yeah. I don't know that you'll add more to what Ira said.
I just wanted to give you what our ask is.
I think your attorney did it. I think your attorney did it. Thank you. Anyone else in the auditorium wanting to speak on the item? Going once, twice, closed. All right, no more. Well, he can, but I'm going to, he's presenting, so I'm going to close the opportunity for the public to speak. Neeson, you can respond to anything that was said and...
And Neeson in particular, one point that keeps coming up is, why can't this project be done at a 3.0 as opposed to 4.5? So, obviously, include that in your rebuttal. Thanks.
Yeah, and I'm going to give you, just before you start, I'm going to just give you my simplistic breakdown of this. It's like three issues, and one is a subset of the other, but it's this overlay with the subsequent voter referendum. I think a subset of that is the FAR increase, right, which is what Brian just talked about. And then the third is just the existing building condition, is what I heard from different people speaking when they came up. So, I know that's overly simplistic, but that's what I heard.
And if I may just one more thing, specifically what, you know, the applicant would be doing to ensure some level of...
Community benefit?
Well, not only community benefit, but also how the original building will be paid... Well, not only community benefit, but also how the original building will be paid, you know, respect through whatever type of redevelopment there might be.
Yeah, and I call that sort of like community benefit, but that's the other thing I heard, that and other subsequent...
And lastly, when we can expect renderings and more specificity with the project?
Sure. Thank you and thank you for your generosity in providing time for this discussion. There are, I wanna cover all the points that I can as best as I can. I would like to comment on some of the statements that were made by some of the speakers. Of course, I thought the best one, candidly, was Joe Magazin's saying that this is, you gotta think of this like Wayne Gretzky. What happens if we don't move forward on this opportunity? And I think we all know, because of the people involved, Steve Ross and the related companies and his track record and resources, and Frank Geary and his accomplishments, that it is highly unlikely that as good an opportunity will present itself in the short term and the property may stay as it is. So I think that that is fundamental. I would also say that, understand, of course, your role as the planning board is to recommend on the zoning and the land use. It is not to recommend on a specific site plan approval. That itself is done by the Historic Preservation Board. And the Historic Preservation Board can address multiple concerns, including preservation concerns at the time that an application appears before them. Now, that said, naturally, people wanna see, well, what's it gonna be? You know, and there's no one who's more anxious to share what that vision will be than Steve Ross himself. But when you work with Frank, and Frank Geary has been assiduously working on this for the last few weeks. But one thing that Frank Geary does is he works in a way that is different than other architects that we may be accustomed to seeing. You can't just tell him, come up with a concept plan, you know, that we're gonna show to market this to the board or the community that we want. Frank has a specific design process in his studio where he makes models, models after models after models. And so that when he presents something, it has had such a deep level of thought and analysis and ability to visualize. And so we're not, we just can't show you a sketch because it's just not the way Frank works. That said, we are confident that before this goes to a vote of the City Commission in July, that we will have something to show you so that the whole community will see what it will get. And what it will get will be something that we hope will be one of the enduring architectural treasures of our city for the next 100 years. Because there is no greater architect that we've had work in this city than Frank Geary. So that answers that. Now, a couple of other questions you've had. Why the 4.5 FAR? Steve Ross believes that in order to be able to have a successful project and also one that gives him the flexibility and creativity that he needs, that that is a number that is required in terms of FAR. And it is a number that is not foreign to this city. It is, the Carolan Canyon Ranch project is that. And some of the, Mel Grossman, the architect, the hotel, the Deauville was lauded, some of his other projects, some of them have much larger FAR, such as the One Hotel, as at least a 33% larger FAR than is contemplated. And there are other properties as well. There was a time in the 50s and 60s when buildings could be built to that size and scale. It was reduced. But in order to make this a viable project and have the flexibility they need, they believe the 4.5 FAR is what's required. We were, there were a few other questions. One, the Chair asked about also the $100 million figure. That's based on a study that we've done on net present value. That's the tax increment that is generated from, which I know you're well familiar with, but everyone else may not be, generated from the increased value from the redevelopment of that property. And that is projected to be 6.4 million a year and over the 23-year life, 100 million net present value. One of the highest goals of the North Beach CRA is to provide workforce and affordable housing. And there will probably be no vehicle that this city will have that will be better to fund that in the short term than through this project and the creation of that TIF revenue. And I know Mr. Ross pledges to work with the city. Believe me, he's already told me from day one, he'd like to build workforce housing up in North Beach. And so he will work with the city to realize that vision of creating workforce and affordable housing for the residents of Miami Beach. The other questions also with respect to the historic architecture and preservation. I did wanna let you know that we have retained, retaining Charlotte von Moos, who is an architecture professor at the University of Miami, both an architect and an architectural historian. In fact, she wrote a book on early 80s Miami architecture. And she's extremely excited to be working on this project. And so all of the things that are so important about the Deauville and what it meant to this community will be looked at and what is appropriate incorporated into this project. And if you would allow me, indulge myself, because I hear so many people talk about the Deauville, I can assure you, there's no one in this room who has had a more intimate relationship with the Deauville, including the Sussmans, than myself. My father, some of you may know, owned a chain of drugstores. And for many years, his best drugstore was in the Deauville Hotel from the time it opened in the 50s until he closed it in the early 80s because of the decline of North Beach. It was a drugstore with a luncheonette and he had a separate tobacco shop in the hotel. I spent literally thousands of hours there. I worked there in summers and holidays. Cashier, stock boy, dishwasher, soda jerk. 1964, when the Beatles came, I tried to, I snuck a box of candy up to their penthouse in the Deauville Hotel. If you look at the Florida archives, you'll see a picture from the early 60s of my brother and I and my parents in the Napoleon Room, their nightclub at one of the nightclub performances. I saw the Supremes there. I saw Sammy Davis Jr. I know that property like the back of my hand. And I had a lot of good memories from that property. But it is also time now to look forward, to create something that would really be great for the contemporary, sustainable, built to the highest quality standards with the greatest design, and also as an element that pays respect and homage to that hotel. And I would say this, Frank Geary, he's 93 years old, completely active mentally and physically. And he knew the great architects of that time as well. There's no architect we could have in this community who I think could better capture the spirit of Miami modern architecture in the 50s and 60s than Frank Geary. So with that, I don't know if I've, I hope I've answered all of your questions. And if not, I'd be happy to give you some further... One other thing I would mention too, the overlay, by the way, there is a, there are benefits for all the properties identified in the overlay, including the vacant lot to the north and the vacant lot to the south. You should know that under the zoning as exists today, if either of those are developed individually, they have a 2.25 FAR because they're under 45,000 square feet. However, as being part of the overlay, if they're developed individually, their FAR is boosted to 3.0. So even those properties, whether they are ever developed as part of the Deauville or separately, still receive a benefit under the overlay. Thank you.
Board Member Bott?
I am gonna ask for everybody's indulgence for a couple of minutes because I have quite a few things to ask and to say and to put forward for everybody's consideration. Neeson, I wanna preface my questions and my comments with a number of things. First of all, I agree that this will be a completely transformational project. And it needs to be because the owners of the Deauville who let it fall into disrepair intentionally, in my opinion, have done great damage to the immediate vicinity, to the business owners, to the neighbors, and to North Beach in general. And I think that's just a deep tragedy for a number of reasons. So I agree with you, with everybody who's spoken on this from the chamber and from folks calling in. It is and needs to be a transformational project. It needs to revitalize the community. I'm excited to see the project. I'm excited to see what Mr. Geary can come up with. I agree, he's a terrific architect. I like a lot of his projects. It's not my role to opine on what he's going to bring. So it's not a question of, I don't want this to move forward. I don't want the project to move forward. That's not the issue. Before I go further in my comments, I have a couple of questions if you don't mind. Is there a signed purchase agreement for this deal?
There is a signed agreement to purchase the property.
Predicated on what?
Well, I'm not at liberty to discuss specific terms, but I can say that there is an agreement to purchase the property.
If this overlay does not pass at 4.5, is this project dead?
Again, I'm not at liberty to discuss specific terms of the contract.
I think that's a pretty material consideration. Because let me just give you my whys. What we're talking about here is the opportunity to build something that could transform the city of Miami Beach in a tremendously good way. It could also transform the city of Miami Beach in a very dangerous way. It could set the precedent for anybody to let their property fall into disrepair and then make a play for upzoning the way, not the way this has happened, but because this will have been set as a precedent. All you need is one precedent to make a case. You might not win your case, but you can make your case. It is, the upzoning is so significant. I mean, you can build as of right just on the Deauville property site. And I'm not talking about the two vacant lots. It's a separate issue with all due respect to the Sussmans, which I meant to disclose. I did take a phone call from the Sussmans and had an interesting chat. But I'm not even talking about their property. I'm talking about, just on the Deauville property itself, there's so much unused FAR already that they could, they, Mr. Ross and Mr. Geary, could build a brilliant, large, transformational project right there as of right. And if they came to us and said, hey, we have this brilliant idea. We need a little more FAR. Like, for instance, the Wilsonian did. They came in and said, hey, we need a little more FAR than what we can get easily. We're gonna go to the voters with it and here's our project and here's why and this is what we're gonna do with it. And the voters said, you know what? That's a great project. We're really in favor of that. That's not what's going on here. There is already a tremendous amount of FAR as of right and a moderate upzoning could be one thing. Going from 3.0 to 3.5, that wouldn't stick in everybody's craw. But right now, the amount of upzoning that's being asked for is not paying any respect to the fact that this was just zoned in 2005, a historic resort district. It's undoing that. It is not paying any real attention to the scale, the character, the context of the neighborhood. And I understand that there are tall buildings there, the Carolan Canyon Ranch and some others. But the city has made a decision to think about the ability to build tall and dense. Not dense in terms of the number of people living there perhaps, but in terms of the amount of space being taken up. We don't have any massing studies from either the planning staff or from your clients. Not even, no conversation about sightlines, no conversation about what this could look. It could be tall and narrow and super tall. It could be low and wide, but all glass and so you could see through. There are so many unanswered questions. And to say that it's something you cannot disclose as to whether or not this project will go forward if you don't get the 4.5 FAR, I think is absolutely unfair to this board, to the planning staff, to the commission, and to the voters of the city of Miami Beach.
Now, let me, if I may, just say two things. Number one, let me also make it clear, this project will only go forward if Mr. Ross is the developer and controls the project. And the mayor has made that crystal clear to us. So I wanna put that, make sure everyone understands that.
And let me just reiterate, I am thrilled. That's great. I have no issue with Mr. Ross or Mr. Geary.
And the other thing is, in terms of the size, I would point out, some numbers were thrown around. The numbers weren't correct. The property is 160, the Deauville itself is 166,000 square feet. It has an entitled FAR of 500,000. You'd be adding approximately 250,000. And you'd have 750,000 feet buildable on that property as opposed to what you have today. It's not a million square feet. It is also true that in that neighborhood, there are many buildings of that or greater FAR, including, as I mentioned, not like Canyon Ranch, but Acoya, which is just down the street, which is significantly taller, probably approaching 500 feet tall and, you know, Sterling and... So it's not out of character with that neighborhood. And, but what is important, excuse me, is that, is that given the prominence of this site and the importance of this site, that there be really terrific design. That's something that we can all be proud of.
And I don't disagree with that. I would expect nothing less, given the names involved. And I am very much, I think everybody is, looking forward to seeing what that might be. I think that asking for a doubling of FAR before we have any, excuse me, not doubling, I'm sorry, I misspoke. 50% increase of FAR without having even the first, you know, back of a napkin massing study to give people a sense of what this could look like. And again, you know, are we being told, you either let me develop this project the way I want to with 4.5 FAR or it doesn't get developed at all? I think that is a relevant, salient point to this conversation.
I think you maybe can assume it won't get built. I don't know.
I think that if we are talking about something that is this big and important to the city of Miami Beach, this needs to be a transparent conversation. I don't see why that's difficult. You know, we had, when Mr. Galbit worked with the city for a number of years to develop the 500 Alton site, it took a number of years. And he eventually got what he wanted. But there was a ton of community outreach and there was discussion and there were concessions made one way or the other. You know, the old adage of why would you buy the cow if you're getting milk for free? You know, we're being asked to give everything that people want without knowing what we're going to get in return. And we can take it on faith that we'll get something fantastic in return. But we don't have any idea of what the public benefits are. We don't have any sense of what... But not, I'm not suggesting that having a thriving community is not a significant public benefit. Obviously it is. But in terms of the way public benefits, the phrase is used when negotiating contracts.
So with respect to public benefit, and I will tell you, in terms of sayings, one of my father's favorite ones was also, don't look a gift horse in the mouth. And the public benefits, this zoning itself requires that there be a development agreement with the city. And that will, in addition to the enormous benefits from the TIF generation for the CRA, which will probably be much greater than the number I gave you because if you look at the nature of transformational projects like this, like Time Warner Center and what it did to that immediate area in the west side and Guggenheim and Bilbao, you will have a multiplier of revenue for the CRA to fund housing and all of these projects. But the development agreement is a requirement before anything happens, before any zoning is approved. And that development agreement will be before this city, you know, before this is put on the ballot. Or at least in a draft form, before it's put on the ballot. And before any zoning is adopted, there will be a development agreement because the zoning requires it. And that will set forth all of the requirements.
Let me, can I ask staff a question on the ballot? Because obviously, we're not approving. We're just sending a recommendation. Ultimately, the public will vote on this. What exactly is on the ballot? Does it include the development agreement details about the project? No?
No, the ballot question is required because the ordinance includes an FAR increase. And under the city charter, any increase in a property zoned...
No, no, I get that. But what will be on the ballot?
Remember that we're limited to 75 words as to what we can include in a ballot question. So it'll include... question, so it'll include the geographic boundaries of the overlay area, it'll include the current zoned FAR for the properties, and it'll include the amount of the proposed FAR increase.
Right. I mean, because to Daniel Sorolla's point, all we're doing, you know, we're not deciding to give you the FAR or not, we're making a recommendation, ultimately the public's going to decide on that, but you want it to be something the public will approve. And I don't know if that's true or not, what he said, that they've never, ever, ever voted to increase FAR. I don't know if that's true or not.
They did in the Town Center, and they did for the Bass Museum, as was, not the Wilsonian, the Wilsonian, as was mentioned.
Okay. So I'm just saying, listen, I want the project to go forward, whether it's whatever FAR, I want the project, I think it's important for the city, but I also want it to be something the voters will vote for.
And believe me, we do too. You know, Steve Ross is spending so much of his time and energy on a project that at this moment, including the fact that it has, needs some legislative change, is far from certain. Frank Gehry, I'm sure, is not cheap. And he is so committed and believing in this project. So this is...
But here, I guess, Neeson, I don't need to cut you off, but I don't want to belabor the point, but obviously, the city's restricted to 75 words on a ballot. So what is it, what are you all going to do? What's your plan, your game plan to educate the public so they have as much detail as possible, why you need four and a half? I mean, what's your plan on that? Because to me, it's all about public education and advocacy on behalf of your client.
I completely agree with you on that. We've assembled a team that is expert at terms of sending out those, creating and sending out those messages, and will be hard at work in doing that. Part of it, candidly, is going to be explaining the, there are many elements, candidly, to this story. One is, this is a passion project for Steve Ross. I mean, he graduated Beach High. The Martinique Hotel was at 64th and Collins. By the way, in its day, until the Found Blue and Eden Rock were built, was considered, it was a Roy France Hotel, one of the finest hotels. He lived on Biscayne Point. You know, you see the kind of projects he does and where he does these projects. He doesn't have to do a project here. This is a passion project for him. Number two, Frank Gehry. You know, Frank is arguably the greatest architect of our time. He did a magnificent project already in the city with the New World Symphony. We have an opportunity to have him again, and who knows how many more projects Frank will be creating. You know, and number three, and probably the most important, is this is the critical cornerstone for the true revitalization of North Beach. Funding the CRA, creating something in North Beach that is really people around the world look at and say, aha, this is beautiful, that our own citizens can enjoy, driving by with pride and say, look at this beautiful Gehry building, you know. Also, look at, you know, having something where they can pay homage to the Deauville and its history and what happened there. So there are people who are better at campaigns than I am. It's been a lot of years since I've campaigned, but there's a team that's been put together. We get that messaging out and do voter education, and we're going to get out, as soon as we can get out more detailed information about the design and everything, we will, because the community wants to know. I mean, let's face it, we are asking you as a board, to a certain extent, to take a bit of a leap of faith, that this team can do something spectacular and special, and they need the tools, which is the zoning, to do it.
And Rahelio, this goes to plan, when does this go to commission for the next meeting?
July.
I believe it will be the July meeting. And is there two readings for that?
The second reading could not take place until after the referendum happens.
Right. So we would have first reading of the ordinance in July, approval of the ballot question, and if the voters approve the measure, then the second reading, the ordinance would come back for second reading in December.
Right, but no matter what we recommend, the commission has to then agree, they have to vote to put it on the ballot.
Yes.
All right.
And let me also offer this, if I may. If there are any board members, or even if you wanted to in any workshop session, see what, as the project progresses, see if you presented it. We would be happy to assure arrange that.
Is July the last opportunity that we have to get this on the ballot in November?
For November, yes.
Yes.
That's a challenge, it's a time challenge.
I have to say, I agree with most of the things that Tanya said, if not all. I mean, a leap of faith is a generous description. I mean, we're blind. And I understand, as an architect, you don't want to show anything that isn't fully flushed because it may change, but what about zoning diagrams? I mean, and comparative analysis? Like, we've seen applications where they're applying for height increase, and they show us relative to other properties in context, how it relates, but we're missing all of those things. And I, I agree, we've heard many things. What is the FAR of the Carolan? Somebody said it's four, somebody says three. Do you know what it is?
We have the staff report from 1996 indicates that it's a 4.5.
Okay. That's helpful.
But it's a smaller, am I correct in recalling that it's a smaller plat?
No, about the same, about the same size.
Okay, I apologize.
Mr. Simmons?
And I apologize if I stepped out and hear what Mr. Elias said, but I actually, conceptually, agree with everything that Tony was saying. But I also think that, to what, you know, a lot of, like what Mr. Magazine was saying, you know, we do have a, I don't want to call it once in a lifetime, because you never know what can happen, but in terms of related quality, you have seen the transformational effects of their developments. And I think that, you know, we right now are not necessarily approving a project, but we are allowing it to, or we could allow it to pass the first step, to enable the commission to vote, but most importantly, the voters to vote, and the residents to vote, to see what they want to see in this area. I think what's also important is to really bifurcate the issues. You know, we did not weigh in on the demolition of the Deauville. I think that's something that, well, on the ability to demolish the Deauville, that was not within this board. The only thing that we're talking about is what we would potentially like or not like to see happen with the redevelopment in the North Beach corridor. I also am somewhat sympathetic to the neighboring owners. I did have a conversation with the Sussman family, but I am sympathetic to them, and I would be supportive of including the neighboring properties in whatever might or might not be approved.
Ms. Frida?
Yeah, so, first of all, to mention that, I don't feel like I have enough, I don't have a lot of information for this particular ordinance. It's, I have even less for, as it relates to the Sussman's property, but I am in favor of exploring the idea of expanding it to the neighboring areas, but I wouldn't want to know, I wouldn't want to know staff's recommendation as to that, and obviously, you know, they don't have one here today.
Can I just cut you off for one second? And this is a question for staff. If this was approved, I certainly hope that the applicant would come forth with obviously a huge, you know, vision plan and a huge push to educate the voters. I assume that the neighboring property owners would have to do the same, correct? Meaning, because if, you know, the voters were voting on something, I assume the neighboring property owners would be in their best interest to do the same, have some type of vision put out for what they, you know, would incorporate as part of that overlay?
If they are to be included.
If they are to be included. Is that correct?
Which all we can do is recommend to the commission that they include.
Correct. We can only recommend, I just, again, want to make sure that it's clear that whatever the voters are voting on, they have a chance to see what that could be like. I think that's very important as part of this process.
So to continue, though, obviously, I would like to see designs, we all would, but there are, as we all know on this panel, many of the people know in this room, there's like, probably close to 1,000 steps you have to go to before getting anything off the ground. I mean, just hill after hill that you have to climb over to get something done, especially a project of this magnitude, and I have faith in the process, which this is, you know, one of the first steps in the process, but I have faith in the process that it will land on a design and something that makes everybody happy, especially because it's going through the Historic Preservation Board. And that's, you know, something that staff noted in their report and recommendations, was that it will, anything that, any final approvals will have to go through the Historic Preservation Board. I think it was Mrs. Perez, I think that was it, who mentioned, it would be wrong of us to stop this here and not let it move forward and not send it to the voters, and I was thinking about that. And then I was kind of thinking about the different comments that we're receiving, and they're really, they go both ways, all right? And so I think that it's right, the right thing to do is send it to the commission, recommend it to the commission, and then let them decide if the voters have it. I think the right thing to do on a project of this magnitude with this significant increase of an FAR is to send it to the voters. And I don't think it's right of us to just stop it right here, and then that's on us that the Deauville potentially is sitting there, you know, crumbling for the next however many years, when we have a really incredible opportunity. I'm not saying it's going to be perfect, I don't know yet, but it's an opportunity to explore that I think is something that we shouldn't miss out on, and so I'm in favor of this.
So what, two things. What happens if the voters balk on 4.5 FAR? No matter how good the information campaign is, they just say, you know, that's too big. We want the project, we just don't want something of that scale. Are we back to, I mean, is that, that's the end of the whole thing, or can it be reimagined?
Well, I can't answer that question. I think we'll see what happens in November if this gets to the ballot, and if it wins, obviously, continue going forward. If it doesn't, I guess some adjustment, you know, would have to be made, but I can't, I can't tell you what there, there's no plan for it if it doesn't go forward.
And I have a question for the staff. If for some reason, Mr. Ross decides that he's not interested in doing this, even though, hypothetically speaking, FAR of 4.5 passes, and Mr. Ross decides that he's not interested anymore, and he walks, does that overlay stay in place so that it would stay, whoever the next purchaser of the property, the distressed property, could build something? Or even the current owners of the distressed property could build something to a 4.5 FAR? Or is this, is this overlay contingent on this development going forward with this developer and this architect?
Well, didn't you say that the development agreement had to be in place before the ballot?
As drafted by the applicant, the only way a property owner could be eligible for the FAR incentive is if there were a development agreement in place.
And that would bind them to the project, right?
Well, that would be subject to negotiation, but that's one of the terms that the applicant has alluded to in their presentation.
So we could specify...
My point is, though, that if, you know, God forbid anything like this ever happens, but some, for some reason, the whole company implodes, like it just...
Are you saying the public approves it and somehow Ross backs out?
Somehow, you know, it gets beamed up to Mars.
A real big hypothetical, but I understand your question.
No, I understand, but you have to...
Yeah, if he backs out, the voters approved it, what would happen?
Town Center was approved at 12 stories, it's now to 23.
Yeah, I get it. I understand your question.
So forgive me for asking, but let's say the related companies get beamed up to Mars and are no longer able to build on Miami Beach. That FAR overlay stays in place, or does it go away?
No, the overlay would remain in place unless the commission repealed it. But again, you know, I think a key term in the way it's been drafted by the applicant is that the incentive is only available to a property owner that has entered into a development agreement. So the terms of that DA are obviously to be determined, but that's how it's been drafted.
But as the city attorney, I'm assuming that we enter into a development agreement somehow, it binds the applicant, barring some, you know, clause like...
Yes, I mean, yes, the issue, there'd be a number of issues, but one would be on any, on any assignability, you know, but the applicant, the applicant is before this board saying that they would agree to, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Neeson, but that you would agree to some sort of restriction on who develops it.
Yes, we, what we know, look, the zoning can say that one of the requirements is the development agreement. It can't say who, in the zoning, it can't say who the specific developer is, but in the development agreement, the city commission can say, you, Steve Ross, must be the developer, or you don't get the incentive.
Well, that's something, because to Tanya's point, otherwise, you could get the 4.5 and then flip it for millions to some other developer, so...
Well, I mean, believe me, not only has, that's what we have been told by the mayor, and we are obviously fully prepared to do it, you know, 100%.
So is that a condition that we, that we put forth for the development agreement? It's exclusive, or it'll just be negotiated in the future?
I think that you can, as with any other item, if you'd like to transmit advisory recommendations, you can do that by separate vote.
Okay. All right. So can I also, and so in the staff's recommendation, there was also the additional recommendations that it be transmitted with the...
Right, the public benefit.
The request that it's modified to include setbacks and open space requirements, I think we're all, would be in agreement with that.
Do you see this?
Yes, and we were in agreement with that.
And then the defined public benefits program, I would be in favor of specifying expressly saying to include affordable housing, workplace housing, as part of that public benefits program, and actually, the development of it in Miami Beach, as you referred to, but to, and some sort of expediting it. I think we have a unique opportunity here to kind of leverage expediting a workforce housing project that normally would not get done for years and years, but here, you have a developer who can actually get it done in our city and do it well.
Well, we routinely review these projects where the land value is too high to put the workforce and affordable housing there. So I think with the Lincoln Lane lots, for instance, it's better to put the money into a fund and build them elsewhere, but when do we ever see where those things will be built?
Exactly. Can we make a contingent to build on your concept, that he, this developer who has expertise in this and is getting an awful lot, no pun intended, will initiate a public, a workforce and more affordable housing project within, I don't know, a year and a half or some, I don't know what exactly the details would be.
Well, Tanya, you can make a contingent, we can make recommendations that the city negotiate that.
That's right.
But we can't continue, we can't make the...
Sure, we are happy with...
I didn't mean to make a contingent.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, but you're right, thank you for clarifying.
We are happy with the recommendations specifically, including that the funds should among the uses of the funds should definitely be workforce.
But I think the issue is that the funds get directed towards, that the public benefit monies for a project get allocated towards a fund for affordable housing of some sort, but nobody's initiating that kind of a project. So could the recommendation be that as one of the public benefits, in addition to directing some funds, there is also the initiation of said project, as opposed to us all sitting around saying, hey, look, more money is going into the fund, and nothing actually happening as a result of money being in the fund?
You've got a good point. I mean, does staff know, I mean, we always hear about contribution to the fund for affordable housing, but never gets built, like so...
I think it would help the ballot measure.
Well, I certainly, I'm sure, because I know he's told it to me personally, the day or two of conceiving this project, that he wants to see workforce housing. So I think we can make the commitment, I mean, we can't define the specifics now, but that you could recommend that one of the conditions be that, you know, the developer worked with the city on that.
I would like to see Frank Gehry design workforce.
That would be awesome.
I think you found the property...
Just won't be on his website.
You found the property earlier this morning.
I worked.
By the way, which was owned by my father, that 87th Theres lot, which he sold actually to the city, and you put the money in his drugstore, which went out of business when North Beach went down, so...
Hey, Nick, just a technical question. What's the state rule on now the CRAs and the sunsetting? What year is that, and what provisions? How would that apply?
I would have to look that up and get back...
This is 2051. This is the newest CRA, was just created, so it's a 30-year life, and it sunsets in 2051.
Is that, that's beyond the state, there's a state... Is that, that's beyond the state, there's a state bill that passed that had something to do with sunsetting CREs.
Existing also? I'd have to look.
Yeah, it was for existing. And limitations on new CREs, but anyway, just, just double check.
So in addition to that, I would also just include the thing, the, I would phrase it as a recommendation to the commission to consider the inclusion of the other properties, not, not, it's, it's not my recommendation to include them because I don't have enough information, nor do I have staff's analysis. But at, at the very least, I think the, the commission should be aware of the issue and, and consider it.
Jonathan, I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, Steph, that, that's something that we can actually amend the boundaries and the criteria? Not just make a recommendation?
Well, that's, because Mr. Larkin mentioned, he thought we could do it, but-
We can.
We can.
We can amend the ordinance?
Yeah, like this.
Yeah, you, you, you've, you've done that before. You routinely transmit ordinances with, with-
Recommended?
Right.
Right, okay.
We're just recommending something for the commission, so even if, even if we approved a recommended ordinance, I think the-
You're still advisory, yes, yes.
Correct. The commission could still either, you know, reject or accept whatever is in it.
So what I'm saying is, I would recommend the, the current ordinance as is with, you know, the red line attached, just to have them consider that as well as part of their deliberation.
So these are subsequent recommendations, right, Nick?
But this one we can do at the same time.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand what can be amended in language here versus what needs to be a supplemental recommendation?
The, the supplemental, the, the reason I said I advise you on the, on the, on the ownership of the property as a separate recommendation is because that really pertains more to the, you know, to be negotiated development agreement and not to the amendments that are before you. But if you want to transmit the amendments with recommendations, that's, that's appropriate.
But if we don't vote on the redlined edits to include the other properties now, can the, the city commission would have to send it, would, they have, have to revise it and then send it back to us for approval? Or no?
We would need to look at that. I don't believe the change is so major as to, as to fundamentally alter the main purpose of the ordinance, which is the standard, does it change the main purpose? But, but we would, we would look at that.
Yeah, because Nick, I, I think what his, I think what all of our opinion is, is that the revised, the one that Michael Larkin submitted, this simply amends it to include the neighboring properties. And so while we can't put that into the, the ordinance that we're recommending favorably or unfavorably, what if I understand you're saying we would recommend this ordinance in the package favorably with a recommendation, right, that the commission consider adopting this one instead?
You can do it that way.
Okay, plus Tanya's comments about CRA and whatever else.
But to your point, why, why can't we recommend this proposed ordinance? Why can't we recommend this version of the ordinance?
You can, if you want to, you can. Yeah. If that's, if that's your, if that's the will of the, of the planning board, you can.
What I, I was just saying was that I don't have a good enough understanding of, I have an understanding and I've been given concepts of the Frank Gehry project, the Stephen Ross development. I understand what the, what the idea behind this is. I don't have an understanding, a good enough understanding as is of the neighboring properties as to what their intent for the properties would be. And not, not only that, but what staff's recommendation for the whole neighborhood would be. It's one thing to put one Frank Gehry design complex there. It's another thing to put, you know, three big towers next door. I'm not saying that that's what's gonna happen. I'm just saying I don't really have an understanding, or a good enough understanding of that. Which is why personally, I, I just am not comfortable voting yes on that right now.
Then I would argue we have zero details on the Gehry design, but we have a little bit more on the-
All right. No, but I, I think, I think that that's a very valid concern, though, which is why, again, I, I guess my suggestion to both the applicant and the neighboring property owners is they should both, you know, be included in some type of educational, right, for the voters. They should really be-
To that end, they are gonna have to enter into a development agreement with the city as well. So it's still gonna get vetted in that way. I think you just extend the boundary and the criteria to them.
Also, I just want to point out to my colleagues on, on the board that effective July 1st, the city cannot do any educational outreach. Excuse me, let me rephrase that. The city cannot prepare the usual ballot question voter guide that they do, which educates voters about the items that are coming before them on the ballot. Not taking a position, not, not a campaign, but the, the thing we all get in the mail saying, this is ballot referendum question one, and this is what it's intended to do, and here's number two, and this is what it's intended to do because of a state law that was just passed. So just keep that in mind. Any, any voter education is gonna come-
By the applicant?
By the applicant through whatever they do. So for better and for worse, that means that when residents receive that information, whether it's in a town hall meeting, or if it's in a mailer, or if it's somebody knocking on your door trying to sit down with you for 20 minutes, they're gonna take that information delivered from the applicant with whatever their prior experience has been. So if they've had excellent experience with development coming online, then they're gonna say, great. And if they've been burned, they're gonna say, I don't care how good you say it is, it's, you know, I don't believe you. So I, listen, if we all want this to be a transformational project, which we do, I don't think there's a person in this room who doesn't want this project to go forward and be transformational. We can look back in 10 years and say, look how awesome this is. I, I want to give it the best chance to succeed. And to me, the best chance of succeeding is to not be egregious in the FAR request. The 4.5 that the Carolinas at was before the city downzoned. We have a brilliant architect who has done transformational projects in our backyard and around the world. And I'm quite sure that given whatever envelope of FAR that is available, he will be able to make a brilliant transformational project. And if you were to go to voters with 3.5 or even 4.0, that would be a much easier sell than 4.5 without seeing anything. I'm just telling you, you're coming onto a ballot in November, I mean, you know, you're, you are, you were a politician. You know this stuff better than I do. But, but there's so much stuff going to the voters in August and in November that to give this the best chance of succeeding is not to ask for the most conceivable possible FAR. There's so much that's already likely to not succeed. I don't want this to be one of those things. I want it to be brought online. I want to have this amendment for affordable housing project to be started. I would like to raise the issue of an amendment for infrastructure improvement for, you know, a public benefit, because that is a big issue that has been raised about sewer lines breaking if people, you know, sneeze too hard. There's, there's an opportunity for an amendment which would advance $25 million out of the TIF. And then Mr. Ross would be repaid out of the TIF, but the, you know, that could jumpstart things instead of waiting for 15 years of development down the road. There are all kinds of good things that could happen that could make this succeed. So, so let's, let's make it succeed. Let's, let's create this in a way. Let's put it forward with amendments that give it the best chance of its success. And in that, I would include, I, I would suggest respectfully that 4.5 is asking for too much.
So with that, I, I think we've, we've had a lot of dialogue around the points that I summarized earlier with the addition of ownership. So we talked about the overlay with the referendum and what that means, that overlay. I don't, and Nick, if you guide us as we go through this, if somebody makes a motion, whether it needs to be in the LDR or the comp plan specifically.
Sure.
And then we need to take the LDR first and then the comp plan?
The comp plan first.
Comp plan first and then the LDR. And then, you know, I'm gonna skip the existing building condition for now. But the subset of that was the FAR increase, the community benefits, which include the representation and recognition of the past history of the contributing structure that's currently there now, or the structure that's there now, the Deauville Hotel, other benefits to the community. We talked about workforce housing. And then I think the other thing that we talked about was specifically around the ownership, you know, that there will be an exclusivity for this particular, that there would be, I don't want to say exclusivity, that this would be for this developer to execute. And so does anybody want to take a shot at this, or is there support for it?
I have a question for staff.
Sure.
What was, and again, I am supportive of this red line version, but this is just an LDR amendment. So how would we?
Well, that's why I was asking him to guide where-
Yes, so that means, again, specifically right before, you know, we make a potential motion, how could this be kind of modified? Or how could the existing, you know, comp plan amendment that's currently in our packet?
So Nick, where, where does the overlay need to be? Is it an LDR or the comp plan?
It's both, it's both.
It's gonna be in both?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so if you, if you'd like to expand the boundaries, then your vote on both items should include that.
Okay, it's just that, so Michael, come forward, please, to the microphone. You pass this out, right?
Yes, sir.
So now you gave us amendment language to the LDR. Do you have amendment language to the comp plan?
It would be almost the same. It's a three, it's a three modifications. It's the inclusion of the Sherry-Frontin Act, it's the removal of 150,000 square foot lot requirement. And when it comes to the new hotels, new or existing hotels. So those, those three items can be incorporated into the comp plan ordinance as easily as the zoning ordinance.
And the number of units, right?
So I guess I could take, take a first stab at it. I'd like to make a motion.
Can you meet the number?
Sorry?
Go ahead.
Okay, so I, I'd like to make a motion to approve PB 22-05537 with the following amendments. To strike out the limitation of including parcels that are only larger than 150,000 square feet, to include lots 40, 41, and 42. And, and the third is to include mention that the development project includes a new or existing hotel of at least 150 rooms. And I'm gonna stop there. And just a question for staff. All of the other things that we're trying to have included in the recommendation should come after this, correct?
That should be in the LDR amendment, yes.
Okay, so I'll stop there.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I would second that.
All right, then moved by Mrs. Zement, seconded by Mr. Jelpe.
Okay. Roll call, Ms. Bott?
No.
Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Ms. Zement?
Yes.
Ms. Jerome is absent. Mr. Jelpe?
Yes.
Mr. Elias?
I mean, yes, but I just want to tell you, Nelson, to Tanya's point, again, I, I want this to pass as well. So, you know, you all need to really think, you must feel confident at 4.5 of getting the voters' approval. Otherwise, none of us win. So just keep that in mind when you, I know you gotta go before commission and you're gonna make presentations to them as well. But I just hope you're pretty confident about that and you have the right plan to educate the public. So I mean, yes.
And, yeah.
Okay, and Mr. Frieden?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Mrs. Zement?
And again, before I make this motion, just to echo that, again, I agree with Tanya. This is definitely a, a very big ask. I just implore the applicant to please include as many of the public benefits as possible just to really, again, make sure that the voters are educated so they can make an informed decision. I'd like to make a motion to approve PB 22-0533 with the following amendments. First, to strike out parcels that are larger than 150,000 square feet, to include lots 40, 41, and 42, to include mention of existing hotels of at least 150 rooms, to specify that the developer of lots, again, I don't know the specific lots, but I think it's 44 and 45, should be the related companies?
And that part I would ask you to make as part of your third motion.
You want as a third motion? Okay, so I will stop there.
I would second again.
Did you want to include public, a, a recommendation on public benefits?
I think I should do that, I'm gonna do that on the third one.
Actually, I think, I think I have in my notes on the open, I think Mr. Frieden wanted to include staff's recommendation on the setbacks and open space, right?
Yes, so that would be in this one.
Would that be in this one, or would that be again in the third one?
No, those would be addressed in the LDRs.
Got it, okay.
Was there anything else that would be addressed in the LDRs, Tom? No.
So, and again, including staff recommendations, that includes setback and open space requirements specific to the future development project?
That's right.
And that the LDR ordinance, ordinance be modified to include a fund public benefits program?
Which, I would, sorry.
That's right.
I mean, so, and then the question to staff, should we include what we would like those public benefits to be in this one? Or should we hold off on that for the third?
I think that could be included as part of your, as, as part of your, your motion on the, on the transmittal. Because I think what you're really getting to is criteria that you want to be satisfied for the FAR increase to apply. So I think you could include that.
Okay. Including, sorry? So public benefits program to include provisions for affordable housing and-
Can you be more specific about that?
I would love to.
Initiating, you know, money is going to a fund for public, for benefit, for the benefit of affordable housing,
plus the initiation of an affordable housing project within a reasonable timeframe.
Yeah?
I think you had mentioned workforce and, workforce and affordable.
Pardon?
Workforce and affordable.
Workforce and affordable.
One, one second. And the city's definition of affordable goes up to what, Nick?
Do you know where hell you have to go?
Affordable, I believe, is, is 80% of AMI, if I'm not mistaken.
So, so workforce goes to what, 140? Yeah, so, okay, good, good point.
Yeah, that's gonna be critical.
And, and possibly additionally, having it be concurrent development, so that we're not waiting for one thing to happen before another thing.
15 years later.
Yeah.
That would be great.
Okay. So again, to include provisions for workforce and affordable housing that shall be developed concurrently with, you know, the, the project as part of the proposal.
And?
Sorry, what else is there?
No, well, you know, the other couple of things I tossed out, some kind of infrastructure improvement, because that's going to be put at jeopardy with new development. And advancing this, the TIF coming out of the CRA, or the CRA TIF, whatever you wanna phrase it, you know, $25 million to start so that we don't have to wait in North Beach for monies to be aggregated over 15 years. And then Mr. Ross would get repaid from the CRA TIF as those monies come in.
So that, that'll be in a development agreement?
That'd be in a development agreement.
How do you do that?
I think that would need to be addressed through the DA.
Right, but it's a recommendation that the addresses.
But maybe we can have a-
Are we gonna do that in the third one?
You can do that in your third motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then the second motion, we're done with.
So that's, I think, that's it for the second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Zement, seconded by Mr. Jelpe. Okay, roll call, Ms. Bott?
No.
Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Mr. Zement?
Yes.
Ms. Jerome is absent. Mr. Jelpe?
Yes.
Mr. Elias?
Yes.
Mr. Frieden?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna stay for, I'll stay here for number three.
Third recommendation.
And I think the form of this motion is to transmit recommendations as to what you would, what the planning board would like that DA to include.
The, the planning board would like that the development agreement shall include that related companies shall be the developer for lots, or the specific lots that encompass the Deauville. Is it 43, 44, and 45?
It's, yeah.
Related companies, pardon? Related companies shall be the developer for 43, lots 43, 44, and 45?
No.
So 44 and 45?
City staff?
And I think actually, there's also a part of lot 46 that's included, 43, 44, 45, and the south 25 feet of lot 46 is the weight difference.
It's, the Deauville is 44.
44, okay, so-
Just lot 44.
And the south 25, it's just 44?
So it's just 44?
It's just lot 44.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
The Sherry of the four lots to the south.
The development agreement should include that the developer for lot 44 shall be related companies. The architect for lot 44 shall be Frank Gehry. Infrastructure improvements shall be included as part of this plan specific to the North Beach area. And-
The TIF monies.
And.
Maybe you could articulate.
Yeah.
That the developers shall advance the North Beach CRA a mutually agreed upon amount up to $25 million, which would be used to advance, to initiate North Beach projects. And Mr. Ross would, the developer would be reimbursed as those monies come into the CRA.
Though I do have, Mr. Chair, one question for you. What, these are being asked specifically for Steve Ross and for the develop. But what about the other two? Now you've included two other unrelated properties in there. Uh, they have the same requirements?
I was just gonna ask that same question.
They have to use Frank Gehry.
If they're benefiting from it.
They have to use Frank Gehry, they have to, you know.
Yeah, well, assuming the commission agrees that they, that the boundary should include them, they should be held to the same, you know.
Even to the point of.
Well, they're obviously not gonna be the related.
Yeah, but again, I, they're not gonna be the related companies. And I also think that to have, again, let's be very, at least in my opinion, in, in terms of, you know, the contributions for affordable housing, I, I think yes, but I mean, to have a significantly smaller site, having to use Frank Gehry, I think immediately becomes very cost prohibitive.
No, I, I don't think that's realistic.
What's going on about the contributions to the CRA?
And, you know, contribution to, uh, uh, infrastructure.
But I mean, the, the, if I may, the, the, the developmental potential of those other sites and the value is created by the fact that this special project's been created. So now it does seem like you're imposing all these specific burdens on the project that is the goose that lays the golden egg. And the others are maybe not being asked to. So it almost.
Well, but I think if, if you're asking them to.
Considering the scope of your project, though, I mean, it also is the, the largest.
But hang on a second. It, you are the goose, you're the engine driving this, right? Not you, you're not the engine. But this project is the engine driving it. If we expand the boundaries to include other properties, they're not gonna use Frank Gehry. They're not gonna have Mr. Ross doing, being their development person for those projects. But they should also contribute, I believe, to an affordable housing fund, which would be, uh, developed concurrently. Um, and that the project would be developed concurrently. And they should also contribute to an infrastructure project. And, um, I think that the TIF thing may be a little bit of a different business issue. So I, I wouldn't necessarily include that, but the other two, I think they should. And again, you, this project is be, is asking everybody who's touching it to take an enormous leap of faith. 4.5 FAR, I promise you it's gonna be awesome. You're gonna let, thank us for it. So, you know, yeah, you're being asked to do a little more.
They're for it, they're for it anyway.
So, yeah, so the question is just how to, how to address it. And, and we're talking about an affordable housing fund that's aside from the TIF money, right? This is a contribution upfront to be repaid by how?
So the, the affordable housing thing would be a contribution and a, a project to be initiated and developed concurrently. The TIF thing would be, um, almost like a bridge loan, right? So, so Mr. Ross would put $25 million in, or whatever it is, $20 million into the North Beach CRA.
Expediting.
So that, because the problem with the CRA is that, yes, you start collecting these monies, but you're not gonna get a significant amount of money in the CRA until the hotel is built and.
Fully operational.
Yeah, fully operational. Businesses come back online, et cetera, et cetera. So the CRA may not hit any kind of useful critical mass for 10 years, right? But if they get an infusion, a cash infusion in the next two years of $25 million, that is a game changer for all of North Beach. And if this project is being, um, sold as a catalyst to reinvigorate North Beach, specifically this area, but generally North Beach, and all of the North Beach residents, whether they're for this particular project or not for this project, are unified in the need to see North Beach reinvigorated. Not taken apart from what so many people who live there, myself included, love about it, which is this sort of low chill vibe. Then again, put your money where your mouth is and help North Beach revitalize itself, um, by giving it a jumpstart.
This, this project can't take advantage of the, the TIF itself, right? Or it could.
It does fall within the boundaries of the CRA.
So it would be contributing to.
The hotel site itself does.
So it would contribute, contribute to, but it wouldn't, I mean, if you're building a brand new project, why would you need to take money out of the CRA fund?
Oh, I'm, I'm not saying that it, that it needs to. I'm just saying it's part of it.
No, no, I'm just looking at you while I'm asking those. It's, it, it wouldn't, in theory, take money out of the CRA fund. It would be definitely contributing to the CRA fund.
So, so Nisa, can you guys, would, would the client be, um, open to restricting themselves from not using any TIF?
You know, uh, candidly, a lot of things are being thrown at us at this last minute in terms of, uh, things that we'd have to do and others may not have to do. And so I'd have to discuss with my client, uh, this.
Well, at the end of the day, I'll, we're recommending that the commission incorporates in development. We can't impose that on them. There's a recommendation.
This is just a recommendation.
So I think we just need to make our recommendations and move forward.
Right.
So that would be my, my, my recommendation in the third, just that the, that we recommend that the, that this particular developer, as part of their development agreement, not take advantage of the TIF.
E- even if, even if he is helping to create the affordable housing? Or you mean on the?
No, on that site, on the Doville site. On the Doville site, maybe, yeah, if he's doing it at a different site.
I guess you could specify a lot 44.
Yeah, or the Doville site.
Right.
I understand he's the aggregate generator potentially of a lot of funds. But then you can also participate in the TIF too, which would mean a different thing, and I don't want that to be.
Got it.
And obviously, you're gonna be, I'm assuming you're gonna be negotiating the development agreement. So, I mean, these are our recommendations, and then it's up to you and the city to come to a final agreement.
Absolutely right.
All right, would you accept, who's making the motion? Did you make the motion?
He did.
I lost track.
She helped him. It was a hybrid.
All right. So you're fine with what I said? That they don't take, they don't, they don't get to use the TIF.
I hope the city got that.
They can contribute to the TIF.
Right, but that is not.
For that project.
That is not instead of contributing. It's a separate clause. So they would contribute to the TIF to sort of give the bridge loan to jumpstart it. And in addition to that, no TIF monies would be used for the Doville property project.
Lot 44.
Yes.
All right.
Did you guys get all that?
It's our recommendation.
Yeah, they're still writing.
You can go back and watch this tomorrow.
That last one is they cannot, they cannot accept, um, money from the CRA for improvements on the site?
Right, no, 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 no tax incremental financing for the Doville site.
So this is for the lot 44 DA, right?
Yes.
Yes.
But also, we need to, um, articulate what the other lots would have to do.
I think, I think that would be crystallized as they've kind of finalized the development agreement and.
Yeah, I mean, the recommendation should include that whatever development agreement goes the other, probably that the city consider the same type of contributions.
Negotiate a similar one.
Yeah. Proportionate to their.
Excluding the use of Frank Gehry.
Correct, of course.
And the, and the owner, and the ownership.
Totally talking about the public benefit.
Okay.
All right, we good?
Are there lots containing similar but proportionate public benefits?
With, with regard to infrastructure and affordable or workforce housing, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Before we vote on it, can you read that back when you're done writing it?
All right, Ms. Savage, what, did you have a comment?
I just wanna, uh, understand, um, what, uh, member Bott is, is, uh, and, and what the board is about to do. And, and I started my remarks and my whole argument about equality and equal treatment. So, um, I just, I need, I just need to understand, however, that, um, we, we have an applicant to my right who is represented and, and represents one of the most powerful and wealthy developers in the United States. And he even slipped when he remarked, maybe even the world, and maybe so. Um, and our, our lots are much smaller, whatever project, they're alluding to a project that they, they don't have drawings, which was discussed at length. But they are coming forward with a project that will be fleshed out. We do not, um, and our lots are much smaller. So, um, there is a requirement in this existing provision that says if you avail yourself of this, you will engage in a development agreement process, which we understand, we will.
Correct.
But it will be on our smaller little parcel.
Yeah, I don't know if you understood. We, we didn't dispute that. All we're saying is that, let me stop.
Yes, sir.
You'll be doing a development agreement, and all we're doing is recommending that the city consider proportionately what public benefits should be given to the city in order to avail themselves of that ordinance.
Okay, but, but, right, but the development agreement would be subject to detailed negotiation at the time.
We can't, we can't impose that on you. We're simply recommending that the city consider public benefits when negotiating with whoever their attorneys are that do the development.
And I would, I would hope that we recognize today, and when that day comes, as my clients shouted out, maybe out of turn, but they make a powerful point. We're the ones who are, have had and will continue to be the faithful custodians of a very important contributing structure. So, um, the idea that we.
I think that'll go in your development agreement, we'll make.
Right, yeah.
That'll be part of your community benefits.
Again, there's nothing we can impose.
Yeah, yes, sir, okay.
All right. You never know, you guys might in some crazy world be working together, who knows?
Everyone's laughing, wow.
All right. Tanya, do we get a reading back?
Are you guys ready now?
Yep. Okay. Um, so the DA should include for lot 44, uh, that the developer be Stephen Ross, that the architect be Frank Gehry, that infrastructure improvements be made. That a, um, contribution to the CRA, uh, be, be made, subject to reimbursement, basically a, a, a loan to the CRA that would.
Like an expedited upfront payment.
Yeah, expedited upfront payment. Um, and that they can't, um, accept tax increment financing revenue, uh, for the development itself. Um, and then additionally, for other lots, that they contain similar but put, uh, but proportionate public benefits with regards to infrastructure and affordable and workforce housing only.
Correct, I'll second.
Who, who made the motion?
Mrs., Mrs. Zement?
Zement.
I think it was a communal effort, but yeah.
Motion, and then seconded by Mr. Elias. Okay. Uh, roll call, Ms. Bott?
Yes.
Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Ms. Zement?
Yes.
Ms. Jerome is absent. Mr. Elias?
Yes.
Mr. Frieden?
Yes.
Mr. Jelpe?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you for your patience and time.
No problem. Hopefully we can, uh, see something really great.
Thank you, Nisa. Six thousand. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time. Pleasure. Thanks to all of you who spoke on that.
All right, we're gonna go, uh, now to what in our.